Black call to order the November thirteenth meeting of the Clive City Council with the clerk please call rule.
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Council members Weaver.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Hocker.
Here.
Very good. Would you all rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we have approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
For approval.
Second.
Further discussion seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those nay, the agenda is approved. Next up we have Susan's presentation. This is the opportunity for anyone to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. If you do, would you please approach the podium and identify yourself? And in the meantime, Pete will check and see if there's anyone online. While he does that, I'll remind everyone that we support the pillars of character counts endeavoring at all times remote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. And in all that we do, we expect everyone here to adhere to those principles. Do you have anyone online, Pete?
For those online, you can get our attention in the council chamber by using the raise hand function on your Zooms app. At the bottom of your screen, you'll see the react button. You open that up, you'll see the raise hand button. Your honor, I do not see any hands going up.
Very good. Thank you, Pete. We'll now move into a presentation. Corey. And Liz.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council. Before Corey does his presentation on the process improvement for the Department of Administrative Services, Community Development, and also IT, Information Technologies. I wanted to just thank Corey for leading the charge and collaborating with Amanda and also Corey Phillips on this effort of getting the ERU policy in place and implementation. So I'll let Corey take over.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. A little over a year ago, we brought a policy to you how we thought we could change how we charge ERU for our commercial customers. And you gave us your support and then the clock started. And what was wrong with how we did it previously was we would calculate the ERU for the parcel and then we'd split it over the number of water meters on that parcel. And then also it wasn't updated very consistently. You add those two together and now we have inconsistent ERU charging and billing. And when really the overall question was this in our best practice and it was overwhelming. It was no, we need to do something better. So once we started, Amanda and her team started us off by going out and recalculating everybody's commercial ERUs. We started using the parcel, tax parcel pins and using the new policy to determine what was going to be and not charged for. Once that data table was set, Corey Phillips then took it over. He started comparing what was and what is, and we started looking at variances. Was there big swings in our, with the policy change? From there, our UB division built a brand new owner set of 400 customers. And we started billing last June with the new ERUs and to an overall success. We've had, we've actually made a few changes to their billing from them. We got some feedback. We took it to our billing software and they were more than happy to comply with us. So overall, did it save us any money? No, but it saved us the embarrassment of billing incorrectly. We have a little bit better process in place. It's going to be updated consistently. Anytime a parcel sold through the county, we are updated through our GIS connection and it then feeds into our UB billing software. Any changes throughout the year through building permits, buildings, changes through the comm dev department, it works back through the same process. So we are up to date on our billing just to eliminate any of the many possible errors that were opened during our previous process. So we cleaned up a lot of our mistakes, made it harder to make mistakes. And I think overall, we're going to have a little bit better trust with our commercial owners.
Very good. Questions for Corey.
Eric.
You know, Corey, I appreciate the comments. You know, I'm always a huge proponent of process improvement. Like you said, maybe we didn't save any money on this, but process improvement comes from a lot of different ways. It can come financially, it can come time wise, it can come through savings of labor. But at the end of the day, it's efficiency and I think you guys have accomplished that, that. And I really want to applaud you and your team on finding a more efficient way that more accurately represents how we bill. So congratulations to you and Liz and all your teams on that.
Thank you.
Well, and I'd just like to add to that, that making it easier for commercial owners to understand is really, really valuable. So, good job.
Thank you.
Has there been any feedback from the, any of the commercial?
The first one was obvious, our large multiple owners, they were having a hard time paying the stormwater bill back to the water meter, what was. And their thing, their feedback to us was could we add the parcel location, the actual address? And we were able to add that before our second billing. So we, we respect and all comments, concerns and feedback, and we try to do the best we can to, I mean, our, at the end result, it's about, it's about our customers, our residents, and anything we can do to make it easier for them to conduct business with us. That's why, that's our goal.
Well, I think you've succeeded. Any other comments? If not, thanks a lot, Corey.
Thank you.
Next up, we have consent and Eric, I think you wanted to.
Yeah, move approval with, if you could pull item fifty off for further discussion, please.
Item fifty?
Second.
Motion second to approve consent with the omission of item fifty for separate consideration. Further discussion. Seeing none with council please vote and will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Now we'll take item fifty on stand tap. Eric?
Yeah, I just wondered, there, a lot of the bills there were from 2024 and I do see there's one from, from twenty-five. Is this, is it just giving us a lot of information or why, why such old bills on here?
Stan X has been working on this. I'm not exactly sure which bills, the invoices as they go back, some of them had to do with the fact that we have separated the project out. We've moved it around. They had it ready to go. We asked them to change it. We pulled out the bridge. We're going to bid it separately to get it done. There's some work that we've gone through. The way they bill, if it hasn't been approved, they have to hold the billing. They're not, they can't, their internal won't let them bill it if they don't have the funds available on what the way they've set it out. So some of this goes back. If I, if I understand it correctly, and I'm telling you correctly from what I was told, is they finally caught up with this. So we had a, an addendum not too long ago at the leave, if I remember correctly, and that caught this up to where they can now bill for it.
Okay. Thanks, Chef.
Yep.
Move approval on item fifty?
Second.
Motion second fifty, further discussion seeing none with council please vote and will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Well, next to move to our public hearing on Parkland vacation. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Matthew? Yes, your honors. Published in the Des Moines Register on October twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Amanda?
The display. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight we have our first public hearing that is for a Greenbelt Parkland vacation over on Northwest Hundred and Eight first Street. This map shows you the location that we're looking at. It's the highlighted kind of teal blue color there. This was back in 2023 that the home builder requested to donate sixteen hundred and one square feet of the property to the city in order for the lot to qualify under the Disabled Veteran Homestead Property Tax Credit. There's a maximum lot size for that. Their owner was just slightly, the lot was just slightly over that by that sixteen hundred square feet. So the city did accept that as Parkland donation at the time. And the current property owners have now asked that that be deeded back to them so they can put the lot back into the configuration it had been before. They're paying the fair market value for that sliver as is required. And also all of the city's costs, they're reimbursing us for the time we spent with legal and any recording fees, et cetera, associated with that. It really was more of a goodwill donation exception at the time that we did it. So staff doesn't have any concerns with deeding that property back. So with that, we have three resolutions in front of you tonight for this. It would be, the first is the resolution vacating that portion of the land. The second would be the resolution approving the purchase agreement and the quitclaim deed. And then the third and final is the resolution approving a lot tie agreement that will just reestablish the parcel and the remainder of the lot that it would be transferred together at the future. So with that, staff would recommend approval of all three items. Any questions?
Any questions for Amanda? Is there anyone in the chamber to address us on this matter?
Move close public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close public hearing. Further discussion, seeing none with council please vote and will clerk please post that vote?
Don't have Eric.
I'd voted. Yes.
Okay.
Public hearing is closed by a vote of five to zero.
With the resolution vacating portion of Greenbelt Park.
Second.
Motion second on resolution A. Further discussion, seeing none with the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote?
Not getting Eric.
There must be something pinky going on here. Yes.
Does it look like it's accepting it?
Yeah.
That passes by a vote of five to zero.
With the resolution proving purchase agreement to quitclaim deed for parcel twenty-three dash forty-five.
Second.
Motion second on resolution B. Further discussion, seeing none with the council please vote and will clerk please post that vote?
Did you get me on that?
Nope. It looks like it is.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why it's not showing.
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes by a vote of five to zero.
With the resolution proving lot tag agreement parcel twenty-three dash forty-five and lot forty-nine, Shadow Creek, plot six.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion, seeing none with the council please vote and will clerk please post that vote?
I thought it was just your incompetence.
My name and incompetence have never been mentioned in some sense.
Are you a yes?
I don't have McCoy this time either. Are you a yes, McCoy?
Sure.
Okay.
And after that suspense, it passes by a vote of five to zero. Well, next move to the next public hearing. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, your honors. Published in the Des Moines Register on October twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
Amanda?
Pull the screen up again. So for our second public hearing, we have a zoning ordinance amendment related to boarding and lodging houses. I'm not going to read the definitions to you all. This is just bringing the zoning ordinance into conformity with the building regulations updates associated with the rental housing program that you all will be approving or is on for your third consideration tonight. So the definitions match. What staff is proposing is that the boarding houses would be permitted in the R three district, that's multifamily. And that lodging houses, which are a bed and breakfast is a type of lodging house. Not all lodging houses are bed and breakfasts. I think that's a kind of clear way for people to conceptualize those a little bit. But that could be granted by a special use permit in residential districts. The lodging houses are required to be owner occupied and we're also adding a parking requirement to each of these uses. But for that special use permit process, it would really just ensure that there aren't the negative externalities to the community surrounding that. But you could operate, you know, a cute little bed and breakfast fairly simply in your single family neighborhood that wouldn't be offensive. So this is just the check to make sure that what's being proposed is in keeping with the neighborhood that it's in. For the boarding house, we're recommending one parking space per bedroom. And for the lodging house, we would maintain the two spaces per dwelling unit that's required with any of our residential units, plus one space per guest room that's leasable. Planning and Zoning Commission did consider this amendment at their meeting this month in November and recommended approval. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Susan?
I am unclear on the difference in a definition between a dwelling unit or a guest room, and that matters when it comes to how many parking spaces are offered. So could you
Sure.
define that and should we define that or here or is it somewhere else in the code?
Sure. So the, the guest rooms are what is used for overnight lodging that's made available to the general public. That's in the definition of the lodging house where it explains what that is. So those would be the rooms that are marketed for lease. You would be able to have up to four of those rooms in a house that could ebb and flow even on the same property years between. You might have kids living with you at some point. They go to college, you open up another room or some instance of that. So the guest room is just a room inside of the dwelling unit. It's not going to have those completed living facilities that are required, which includes, you know, the cooking and kitchen type facilities, private bathroom type facility and the bedroom, all inclusive on its own is what would make it a dwelling unit.
I just find it a little bit obscure in reading it. Maybe that's just me, but.
I will, excuse me, we'll mention that dwelling unit is separately defined within the code.
Okay. So should it refer to that?
Um, the way it's, the way it's structured in the actual ordinance text is these are sub items to the dwelling unit. There's a long list. It has our single family, our duplex, townhome, our multifamily. So these are just the two that are changing from that list. The rest of them are remaining the same.
So what's the maximum number of parking spaces that could be allowed? Would it be six?
Allowed or required, so we, we today, yeah, so you could have, the maximum could be six that would be required if you had the four full guest rooms that you wanted to lease out that way.
Okay.
Which any house, for the most part, that has a three car garage would be meeting that standard as they would.
So it's on garage or driveway. Does that count the street?
It does not count the street. However, through a special use permit process, that could be one of the mechanisms for meeting the parking requirement. Potentially if that was how the board and neighborhood wanted to consider it.
Eric?
Yeah, and is parking on the street was my question too. Most of the concerns from residents is not necessarily a bed and breakfast here because you typically don't really find that in Clive. What you do find, and you're finding more of it, are these boarding houses or lodging houses where they're putting ten, thirteen people in on single night usage. They charge them twenty bucks for a construction project, where have you. You've got cars parked all over the place. How would this deal with that particular concern?
Yeah, so in this case, the property has to be owner occupied in order to qualify as a lodging house. If it is not owner occupied, then it is a boarding house and would strictly be allowed in that R three district. Keeping in mind that this goes in tandem with the building, building regulations. So these, this effort was closely done between Ryan and I to make sure our definitions aligned between the IBC, the IRC, and the zoning and rental codes. So it has all the other contexts that you guys have been discussing around the rental housing program would also apply to these distinctions. This is just making sure the codes work together and we don't have a conflict.
Is there a maximum on the boarding house for maximum occupancy?
It is going to go back to the dwelling occupant load calculation that's in the code. So there isn't an explicit maximum. There is a practical maximum based on the required open space, amount of parking space, and the footprint of the building. So you would eventually max out, but you could get, if you had a large home, it could allow quite a few folks in there.
What's quite a few if you had a four bedroom house?
If you had a four bedroom house, assuming kind of average sized bedrooms, those are usually going to allow two people in each of the bedroom. Plus you get a person for your common, like, living room space. You can have, I think it's up to two of those. So a four bedroom house could feasibly have ten to twelve as a maximum occupancy for a fairly typical Clive home that we see.
Ten to twelve. So ten to twelve cars then too?
Potentially, yes. But for the boarding house, they would be required to have off street parking for that number. So if they had five bedrooms, they would have to have the five parking spaces. We can increase that if you would like to see two parking spaces per bedroom or a different number in there. This was just somewhat consistent with what we were finding broadly, how other zoning ordinances are dealing with it. There's not a lot of folks, it's kind of a uniquely Iowa problem right now that we have this resurgence of the boarding house with some of the changes at our state legislative level. Our neighboring states aren't necessarily dealing with this. But, you know, staff wouldn't have any objection if you wanted a higher parking number or to make them allowed in other districts.
Yeah, I.
Think you want higher.
No, I don't want higher numbers.
Okay.
I'm not looking to grow this type of industry.
Oh, no, no, I meant you would require more parking.
You'd want a higher number.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would certainly be open to that, you know. Understand that you're, you're having these in residential neighborhoods and it's a real concern for citizens out there. So, you know, I think, I think we need to continue to address it. And I understand that there's, you know, we're handcuffed by state legislation, which is out of our hands, but, but this is, this is becoming a bigger and bigger issue in, in, certainly in where I live and in my neighborhood, there's a number of these that are going on and continue to go on. So they're not decreasing, they're increasing.
And I, I would just point out that the state requirements and restrictions on local governments for short term rentals doesn't, this does not fix that problem.
Understand. But we did find several of these were not on our rental house list.
Yes.
So we, we pass those on to code enforcement.
Absolutely.
Mike?
Yeah, so to that point, two things. Sounds trivial, but how do you define the bedroom, right, between the guest room, the bedroom, the two different languages between lodging and boarding? And then we'll get on to the space piece, but, because what they're doing is you're cutting those houses up, right? Your living room, your family room, they're all becoming independent rooms. Is that a bedroom or is that a studio or is that a? How do you define that bedroom?
Ryan's not here, is he?
You mean to be here, that's really what it's going to come down to.
What's that?
Get up to the mic Doug, so the, the recording picks it up.
You're absolutely right. I mean, you can take a house and carve it up, add some walls. You know, traditionally in the real estate industry, if it has a certain minimum size to support a bed and then has a means of closet or some type of closed area, storage area, you can make that a bedroom.
Egress window.
And an egress.
At the point of then legitimately having a bedroom, having the two means of egress.
Right.
Whether or not that's a window.
Door.
Or a door out the hallway, et cetera. So, you know, practically speaking, there is a limit because you, you know, run out of windows or run out of kind of second means of egress, generally speaking in the house. But that's also solvable, add some more windows. So it does come down to kind of simply a how many divisions of the square footage do you want to try and accomplish?
It's become more expensive though in the last year to put in those windows.
They are appropriately sized windows because these are the same people that are following all the rules too, right? Much more expensive. Again, as alluded to, this is a pretty obscure set of provisions regardless. You know, it used to be in the city of Clive zoning ordinance many decades ago. And it was that kind of bed and breakfast kind of a thing or kind of the more traditional boarding house of the nineteen sixties and fifties. Obviously then for several decades, no one ever thought about it and we frankly took it out of the zoning ordinance in, in the late nineties because it was like, well, nobody, nobody uses this. It's just arcane. Certainly now, again, with some of the, the economics associated with housing, we're seeing this game being played a bit. This, again, as we've alluded to, along with the rental housing code that's before you, there are tools to be used. They are not silver bullets to specific neighborhood problems. So we can try to layer on as many things as we possibly can. However, that state legislature mandate that prohibits our ability as a community to regulate based on family is really the problem.
Because this does not fix
No.
the, the one problem that this all came up about, right? It doesn't fix that at all.
Nothing that we talked about tonight, this, nor a little bit later with third consideration of the rental housing code fixes the problem. These are simply tools to try to mitigate the impacts.
You know, that's where I start getting nervous is chasing a problem without any answers. You're just chasing a problem to put something to what feel good about us saying that we tried to fix a problem that we're not fixing.
And again, I think that's what we're trying to be very clear about. This does not fix the problem. It may give us a way to prevent a bad actor to some degree, but these are not absolute. Nothing that we're, we can put in front of you is going to allow us to prohibit the problem.
That's what I think, part of me thinks that we're putting regulation in to put regulation in for no reason other than to feel good about trying to get a tool to make regulation and more policy, but that's, that's not needed because it can't be used, right?
I, I don't disagree with the premise. This again will be one of those pretty rarely used circumstances. So again, if we have seven thousand houses in our community, you know, we're talking about less than one percent that will ever even have any consideration around this. Probably a tenth of a percent. And maybe this helps with one out of the ten of the.
One percent.
One tenth.
Right? I mean, it is a very narrow set of circumstances. But you ask for tools. We brought you a tool. It's not the perfect tool, but it is a tool.
Other comment of, go ahead, Ted.
No, I'm good. I was going to move close of public here.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll move close of public hearing.
Second.
Further discussion, Eric.
Yeah, real quick, you know, when we talk about tools and one of the things that we, we've discussed is, and this will come up when we talk about our rental housing inspection programs. And Doug, clear me if I'm wrong, is it every six years we do the inspection on that? Is it four years?
The proposed program that's in front of you is situated where the city will do an onsite inspection once every six years.
Right.
There'll be a self inspection every two years.
Do we have the ability to, if there's reason to perhaps do that more often?
The program guidelines that have been discussed with you have circumstances in which increased frequency of inspections could be brought to bear in the circumstances where we have a problem with the property, with the property owner or the tenants. So there is a mechanism to accommodate that. But on the standard basis, it'd be once every six years.
Thank you.
Any other additional comments? Otherwise with the.
I'd like to make one comment. I, I do think that this council needs to think hard about increasing that, not decreasing, as time of inspection. And to put the money behind more, another inspector, I get it, it's going to cost money, but this town is only getting older in its housing stock and turning over more and more increased rentals. And by the time you react in five years, it's going to be too late to then come back. Uh, to then come back and say, let's start doing every two years. It, it's happening already, right? I mean, the rentals just in my neighborhood. Doubled in the private last ten years. Right? So you get behind it too far by saving some money. Uh, I think you got a bigger problem on your hands, but my opinion.
Would you like staff to come back with a report on that?
I could, I'm not asking for that, but if you would like to ask for that.
I would.
Is everybody?
I was gonna say, I'm just gonna say, I'll be back in about.
Ten minutes?
Less than ten minutes to talk about that program, so if you have more questions or comments.
Can you hold it for ten minutes?
Yeah. On that side.
Oh, okay.
So I'm good.
Any, any other comments? So all those, uh, would the council please vote on closing the public hearing? And then would the clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero.
I'll move that ordinance number one, one, seven, three, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
Motion of a second. The first reading, further discussion. Seeing none, will the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? First reading passes by a vote of five to zero. Next up, we have a Hickman right-of-way vacation. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
We did, your honor, it was published in the Des Moines Register on October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
Very good. Amanda?
Good evening. Uh, for our third public hearing tonight, we have the, um, partial vacation of the Hickman Road right-of-way. Uh, Matthew, can you bring the screen back up? Um, this is to support redevelopment of the former Car City West site that is at Hickman and Northwest one hundred and eleventh street. Um, this portion that's requested to be vacated is just a little over a quarter of an acre. Um, and you can see that, uh, there is still ample state right-of-way that will be remaining north of this kind of pinkish colored box. Um, so currently in this area, there is a water main. That, um, runs along the frontage road and then, um, over to the Smart Honda site at that eleven-two-zero-six building. Um, to service one of their hydrants in their car wash facility. Um, and then also the city, uh, welcome sign is in this location. So staff has worked with the applicant, um, to come up with a proposal for a new city sign and also agreement to relocate that water main. Um, so this is the proposed sign that we have worked on with them. Um, essentially what it does is it takes the sign that is located at eighty-sixth and Hickman, the natural grocers, uh, one. It cuts off the tenant wings because Fortress Bank did not desire to have signage, um, co-located with the city. Uh, similar to, we did the come and go sign a few years ago, they also did not want to jointly brand. Um, so this cuts off those extra wings that had the tenant panels. And then scales the remainder of the sign wall down to about eighty-five percent, so it fits in the area with the, um. Kind of complex utility and, uh, sidewalk connections, uh, that will be going on with the, um. Hickman interchange project, once we get to that section, it's going to be impacted there. Um, so this, uh, will look similar to that sign, just slightly scaled down.
What happens to the existing sign?
Um, it will be demolished.
Do we get any kind of resale on that? I mean, I would think that there's some value in that stone.
Um, we can certainly look into that. Um, I don't know that there'd be any of it that's really reusable.
Okay.
Um, but we can chat with the, uh, um, developer on that and see if there's an opportunity to salvage anything.
It's not an inexpensive sign to begin with.
Yeah, and the, uh, estimate on the replacement sign has come in at around a hundred and twelve thousand. Um, and that is, uh, agreed to be paid by the developer as well, um, for the replacement.
I mean, I know we paid, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, it was seventy-five thousand.
About half that.
Fifty thousand or some sixty thousand. Yeah, if there's a way we could, you know, put that in a park or just do something with it, I just hate to. Not get any type of value whatsoever for it, you know?
Sure, we can look into that and see if there's an opportunity.
I will mention to the council, we will be removing, or the art piece that's there will be getting removed by the developer and then. But given back to the city and we're going to get that touched up and repainted and relocated in the city.
Okay, so on, on a, a, uh, when we vacate a property like that, what's, what's the, uh? Uh, Fortress Bank's plans, are, are they going to be able to utilize this for building development or how does that work?
Yep, so, um, if we look at their site plan and preliminary plat here. Um, you can see the building is proposed right here. Uh, it is actually very much into that right-of-way location. Um, so it would actually be over where the water main is, um, and the existing sign is. Approximately right here today, kind of near where the entrance of the building actually will be. Um, so they are definitely utilizing that to support, um, the redevelopment effort on the property. Uh, what's being proposed here is a three-story eighteen thousand square foot class A office, which is. Um, something Clive doesn't really have much in our Polk County side of the community, that class A office. Um, and so with this, you can see that they're maintaining the existing access points for the Car City West property. And largely keeping the same, um, lower configuration here. Uh, the stormwater is also staying in the same area and being, um, improved to some extent, as well as underground stormwater detention being added. Um, and we've also got, um. New sidewalk that will go in along with the, uh, work that the DOT will be doing along one hundred and eleventh street there. Um, we also, as you, it's a little hard to see, but the. Water main here along one hundred and eleventh street also has to be relocated as part of that, um, Hickman interchange project. Um, so Fortress Bank will be installing the portion of the water main that is on their property. Uh, through the additional right-of-way acquisition by the DOT, uh, we, uh. Were, we had to put the water main in an easement on the private property. Um, the DOT only acquired eight feet of additional right-of-way on the city's behalf, which was not enough room to do the street improvement. Um, as well as locate the water main in the right-of-way. Um, so with that, uh, that part of the project will also be getting completed, so we won't have, um, much impact. To the Fortress Bank site after it's developed, um, for when the DOT work starts taking place in this area. Um, they also have their drive-through routing through this area. It does support the, um, minimum requirement to have the three queue capacity at the drive-through. They also are proposing, um, some navigational signage as you come in to direct folks to that, uh, drive-through configuration. Um, this site is also, uh, very out of compliance today on the lighting that's installed. Um, so the new plan is in keeping with our current standards, so that'll definitely be an improvement as well. Um. And I'll go back, you can see the architecture, uh, actually looks really nice with the, um, city sign, very complimentary. Um, using, uh, brick and cast stone, architectural cast stone, um, with a lot of glazing and some metal accents. Um, you can see the, the bank would like to do, uh, building-mounted signage as well as what they're proposing. Um, though that is just, uh, illustrative at this point and will require a separate permit. Um, and then for their landscaping, um, they're also going to plant an additional three trees on the site. Uh, to replace the three trees that are currently in the right-of-way around the city sign. Um, so those will be replanted on-site and will continue to be a planting requirement of the property to maintain those additional three trees. Um, and because the water main is in an easement on the property and not in the right-of-way. Um, staff has recommended a little bit of a different parking lot edge treatment, rather than doing a tree every forty feet with the landscaping between. Um, what we're recommending is we get the trees tucked back a little bit further into the island, so they're not directly over that water main. And then, um, we worked with the designers to do a layered landscaping approach. Um, so these are representative of the actual species on the landscaping plan and scaled to their mature heights. Um, when you can see our little six-foot-tall man, uh, and his family here. Um, so this is what's at maturity, you should see approximately these heights along that parking lot edge. Um, and that is in both, uh, north of the driveway access. And between the two driveway accesses will have a very similar layout there. Um, so we thought that would be a good compromise on making sure we get that headlight screening. And keep the visual interest along the corridor there, um, without having the trees directly over the water main. And also, as we know, we are having, um, challenges with a lot of our parking lot adjacent trees, um. Being able to handle the winter salt applications from both the streets and the parking lots. Um, so we, uh, have specifically worked to find species that, um. Work well together and that should be more, uh, high heat, dry period tolerant. And more tolerant to the salts as well that'll be in that area.
Ted?
So, a couple of questions, Amanda, uh, is this, do we know if this is just going to be a bank? Are they going to be renting out any of these space for other uses?
Yes, um, so the long-term plan is that this will provide enough space for the bank to grow into as they continue to expand. Um, their initial plan is to lease a portion of the building for other office or retail type uses, um, which would be allowed in that zoning district.
Okay, so, and the reason why I asked that question is, um, I'm very concerned about traffic flow right there. Um. As we know, just the traffic in and out of like where the Starbucks is and everything with that, that drive-through, we've dealt with that in the past. It's, um, it can get very clunky there and. A used car dealership doesn't have a lot of traffic. A bank's gonna have more and then if they have retail in there, it's even going to be more, so. Can you talk to us about traffic flow and how that's gonna work?
Yeah, so we do have the, um, divided islands, uh, on Hickman here, or sorry, one hundred and eleventh coming down from Hickman. Um, so that more northern entrance is, um, a right-in, right-out only, so your opportunity. To be able to turn left in or out of the site is the more southern one. Um, which does, uh, align with the Starbucks driveway. Um, we do know that the, the turn lane there doesn't really give folks an opportunity to get over. Usually to make that turn into Starbucks, so we do get a bit of a squeeze in that location. Um, looking just at like the Iowa Trust and Savings Bank as a somewhat comparable use being like a headquarters site. Um, typically, when we've been over in that area quite a bit with some of the construction activity, we're not seeing a ton of in-and-out traffic. What we're really seeing is the people who work there come, they park. And most of the banking today that you're seeing taking place there is like mortgage closures and meetings rather than, um. You know, deposits and the frequent in-and-out that we were more used to seeing with your typical retail banking location. Um, and this one is geared to be that kind of headquarters type facility as well.
You guys are comfortable that it's not going to be a traffic cluster, yeah?
It is not going to be worse.
Nice way to put that.
This, uh, this use will not be worse than what we have experienced there, um, up to this point as far as traffic.
Okay. Last, last question then, that frontage road, we have had some discussions in the past. Um, of closing that off.
Mm hmm.
And kind of rearranging all, does this impact that in any way?
Nope, um, that, that, uh, island is there today, so you aren't able to really get to that frontage road easily here.
Yeah.
Um, the only people who'd be using that would be folks that are making a left turn out of the more southern entrance, coming up and then taking the right. So it would be no different than anyone else at that point that's on one hundred and eleventh going northbound.
Thank you.
I will add, uh, Councilmember Weaver, that as a part of the one hundred and eleventh street reconstruction at Hickman, there will be. An expansion of the turn lanes, so there'll be, um, if I remember right, Jeff, there's two, there's dual laps. And then a straight right, um, lane, so we'll have more capacity. At the intersection than what we have today, it'll basically be a third more. Um, and so that will, it'll maintain the median cuts the way they are today, so we'll be closing anything more off. But it'll be adding more capacity at the intersection itself, so that'll allow us to not have the backup. Quite as much as we do, like especially during rush hour when.
Right.
We have normal traffic patterns around here, which we haven't had for a while, but when we do, um, sometimes in the, the. Evening rush hour, you could see that queue up back up a little bit, now we'll have more capacity, more width in the intersection.
When is that happening?
So that'll happen with the Hickman work itself. Uh, twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty twenty-seven.
Based on the current schedule, that'll be when all of the work underneath the interstate and out to one hundred and eleventh would be reconstructed.
And staff has.
Twenty twenty-seven into twenty twenty-eight, I, I don't want to, uh, this is the DOT working on this project, so.
Right, right.
And staff has coordinated with the DOT's engineering firm as well through this project, they've seen the plans and had opportunity to comment. Uh, last, uh, update we've had recently from them was that they were planning to bid this project in September of twenty twenty-six. Um, slated for spring construction for this portion of it, but as Matt said, it is the DOT and that can change. Um, but that is currently the, the plan.
Thank you.
And then this project, um, is also included now in the city's urban renewal plan. Um, so we set public hearing tonight, um, to consider a development agreement and tax increment rebates. Um, rebate payments at the December eleventh meeting.
Eric?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. Does staff have any concerns about a stormwater management plan with this or where do we stand with that?
Uh, nope, so we've got the existing facility, um, that will be remaining down here and then with addition of that, um, underground facility. Uh, we don't have concerns that that's going to have any issues.
Question on a vacation, so that city-owned right-of-way property. Are we deeding that then to, uh, Fortress Bank? I mean, is this part of an economic development program or?
Yes, yep, um, so.
Part of the incentive program to, to get them to develop, is that?
Yes, exactly, um, so this, basically the city is taking what is largely unused space, all it houses for us is that sign and, uh, water main. Which we're getting both back, um, in a little bit different configuration with the project. Uh, so there's no direct costs at this point to the city for this right-of-way vacation, of course. Um, but it does bring that land back on at a commercial land taxable value rate. Um, and also is the only reason that this property can support that three-story building and the parking that it needs. Um, so it, it truly is a economic development and I think we'll see, um, a nicely assessed building at the end and nice, uh. Tax revenue coming in from it.
We've talked for a long time on how Clive has shifted from development to redevelopment, I think this is a great example of out-of-the-box thinking. Uh, working with, with investors, uh, uh, to, you know. Be bold in their decision-making and building a three-story building right here and. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm very pleased with how we, this has come, come to fruition and how this is moving forward, so great out-of-the-box thinking on redevelopment.
Other comments?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion of a second to close public hearing, before we do, is there anyone in the chamber addresses on this issue? Seeing no one coming toward the podium. Would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? Public hearing is closed by a vote of five to zero.
Would the resolution approve in the public improvements agreement to, uh, one-one-one-four-zero Hickman Road?
Second.
Motion of a second on the resolution, further discussion. Seeing none, will the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero.
Would the resolution of vacating portion of Hickman Road right-of-way?
Second.
Motion of a second on item B, further discussion. Seeing none, will the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero.
Move the site plan preliminary plat for Fortress Bank at one-one-one-four-zero Hickman Road?
Second.
Motion of a second on the site plan and preliminary plat, further discussion. Seeing none, will the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero. Next up, we have our annual financial audit report. Liz?
I'm hoping that Brad is on, okay, great. Um, so what we have for approval tonight is the annual financial, um, audit report. Uh, this is the sixth year that we've used iBailey for doing that work with us. We've had nothing but really great things to say about iBailey and Brad and his team. Um, we have, basically what they do is they have been very virtual for the past six years, especially since COVID. Um, and it's worked really well to not have them come all the way from, uh, eastern Iowa, so. It's been really great working relationship, we've bounced things off of them pre, prematurely, so, um, they make sure that we're doing things properly and. With the best practices in mind. Um, so our process has gone really well again and I believe Brad is on and ready to go. He's going to go through the report with you, so.
Yes, good evening, can everybody hear me?
Yes, good evening, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome, good. Okay, my name is Brad Tyson, I'm a senior manager with iBailey CPAs out of our Dubuque, Iowa office. And as Liz said, I'm gonna go through the financial statements tonight, so I'm hoping you have two documents sort of available available to you. One is the financial statements, and there should be another one called the Government Auditing Standards Report. Um, so the first thing you'll notice is this is a little bit different than last year. Um, so in prior years, actually, I should start, so this year is different because the city will have a single audit in effect um for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. A single audit is required by the federal government anytime a city spends or incurs more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal awards um during a fiscal year. And so this year, the city is required to have a a federal single audit because they've spent more than their, more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in ARPA proceeds during the year, um, or allotted to spend those during the fiscal year. Unfortunately, um, the the federal government is behind with producing a um compliance supplement from which we audit from for the single audit piece. Um, so that piece will not be finalized until they come out with their final compliance supplement. Um, we've heard all sorts of projections, originally, we were thinking um October, November, and then I think a couple of months back, we heard uh maybe January, and that was before the government shutdown. So that piece could be coming later on at some point, we're not exactly sure when, and and I hate to predict at this point too. Um, but so anyways, we've we've done the other part of the audit, the financial statement audit, and I'll go through that here pretty quick. But there are two different pieces to it, so first I'll go through the financial statements. Um, if you have the financial statements in front of you, if you turn to page two through five, that is our financial statement opinion. Uh, the opinion is the same as last year, um, it is an unmodified opinion, meaning we agree with the the way that information is presented within the financial statements. Um, so a clean audit opinion, as is the case that we've had in the years past too. Uh, the opinion also does a great job of spelling out the audit standard-setting bodies uh that we um audit underneath. Um, one is generally accepted auditing standards, which is um promulgated by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. And then there's also government auditing standards too, um, which is um underneath the federal government as well. And that is required by Chapter eleven of the Code of Iowa. It has a couple additional standards um in terms of um disclosure of internal control items and some additional independence requirements as well too. The audit opinion also talks a little bit about the responsibilities of the different parties to the contractor to the audit. Um, that management is responsible for the financial statements, preparing those financial statements and internal controls and maintaining and developing internal controls on a on a, you know, sort of a daily basis. Um, from an audit perspective, we are reviewing internal controls from more of a high level. Um, so looking to ensure things like a bank rec is reviewed or journal entries are reviewed, um, just in order to assess the risk of material misstatement within our financial statement audit. Um, as you as you turn to page six through twelve, this is the management discussion and analysis. And I always like to say this is a good year-over-year analysis of changes from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. It's also written in management's words. Um, so I always recommend, you know, the the financial statements, I think, is about a fifty-page document, um, it's pretty big. If there's only one part that you're gonna read, the management discussion and analysis does a great job of spelling out the changes from last year to this year. Um, it also talks about the changes in major funds. Um, so it talks a little bit about, you know, major fund, or I'm sorry, the general fund, water fund, sewer fund, any changes in those funds and what changes took place during the year. It also has a little bit about long-term debt of the entity too. Uh, the basic financial statements start on page thirteen. Um, on page thirteen, the financial information of the city is sort of divided into two different types of of um entities, one is the governmental activities and another is the business-type activities. The business-type activities are activities of the city such as your water and sewer fund. There's funds basically that have a a user fee, and they try to charge a user fee to recover the cost of those different types of activities. Uh, the government activities are more so your activities that are funded by property taxes or other types of um derived property tax or derived taxes, I should say. So those roll up into the governmental activities section of that. Um, as you continue on page fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, it talks a little more about the individual major funds of the entity of the city. Um, so it gives a little more activity, um, or a little more detail, I should say, about the revenues and expenses of each one of those individual funds too. And it kind of the basic theme as you go through the financial statements is information just becomes more and more detailed that you can kind of dig down into it a little bit more. Um, the notes to the financial statements start on page seventeen and go through page thirty-nine. Um, again, this is more detailed information about certain types of information that's presented within the basic financial statements, such as long-term debt, pensions, transfers, and some risk management activities of of the city. There's also a new footnote this year on um the the entity's relationship with Central Iowa Water Works too. And it talks a little bit about the commitment to that entity going forward and the relationship with that entity as well. Um, after the notes, you get into the required supplementary information, and this is information about budget versus actual analysis for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. There's also some information in there about um ten-year pension analysis in terms of uh the contributions to the to both of those pension plans. Excuse me, and um, you know, uh, um, the proportion of their liability um of the city of Clive for each one of those entities as well too. After that, you get into some non-major fund information, some supplementary information um on pages forty-six through fifty. And uh probably the most intriguing thing there is on page fifty, there's a governmental fund analysis that has a ten-year sort of look back, so you can kind of look at the trends over the last ten years um in terms of revenues and expenses, just for the governmental piece of the financial statements too. Um, there's also a long-term debt schedule on page forty-nine that talks about long-term debt of each individual issue um and how much is remaining at the end of the fiscal year. Um, it normally, this is where we would go into the Government Auditing Standards Report, but since the single audit applies this year and that sort of coincides with the single audit, we have a separate Government Auditing Standards Information Report that we provided this year. Um, this will be finalized when we finalize the single audit piece um down the road at some point too. Um, so that separate document has four pages within it, excuse me, um, pages one and two, it talks about the um Government Auditing Standards, and it sort of defines internal control in terms of three different buckets. Um, you have internal control deficiencies, which is sort of like your low-lying um internal control items. Then it steps up to significant deficiencies, which are any items that are more significant um that we might think we need to disclose to to make those charged with governance aware of. And then there's also material weaknesses that are defined in there too, um, which are items that, any item that could potentially cause a material misstatement within the financial statements. And then we sort of have to um disclose whether or not we have found any of those internal control deficiencies during our during our audit. Um, it's same as last year, we did not have any um significant deficiencies or material weaknesses to report on within that document this year. Um, also on page, once you get to page three and four, there's other sort of statutory findings that we report on. These are items that the State Auditor's Office uh sort of has us give somewhat of an opinion on um to see if there's any, you know, issues that we found during the course of our audit in terms of compliance and regulations with Chapter eleven of the Code of Iowa. There is one finding this year on page four, um, and it's a it's a very simple finding that we've, you know, talked um, talked to Liz and her staff a little bit about, it has to do with tax increment financing and basically um, the the issue is it in terms of TIF, you have to report TIF to both counties that you're in and to the state of Iowa. And there's a little bit of an inconsistency between the way it's reported to the counties and to the state. Um, there's an inconsistency on the state reports specifically, and and I believe those um inconsistencies have been addressed or are being addressed for the upcoming annual urban renewal report that will be filed, that I believe um by the end of the month here, if it hasn't been filed already, so. Um, a very simple fix, um, but just something that we we need to, you know, include within our report as well. Um, other than that, I think that's it, unless anyone has any questions on any of that information?
Any questions?
One quick question to Liz, how how do you address this and how will that change for next year's audit?
Um, actually, I already called the Department of Management, spoke with Ted. Um, he said there's nothing I could do to fix the actual urban renewal report, um, but just made note of it and um and also just making sure that I'm running all of those reports through PFM, which I did as well.
So will that 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 address the uh the the consistencies with both the counties and the state?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, uh, what we're looking for is a resolution.
Would resolution?
Second.
Motion, a second on the resolution to approve the audit, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote and would clerk please post that vote?
Thank you.
That passes by a vote of five to zero, thank you, Brad, thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Furniture, Matt?
Thank you, Your Honor, tonight we have the furniture for the phase-two uh portion of the City Hall remodel project before you for uh purchase and acquisition. This is uh continues to be with All Mix who furnished uh everything that you see here in phase one and everything that we'll have in the phase-two is consistent with kind of the design and look of the workstations and the furniture that we have in phase one. Um, things are progressing very well with the phase-two renovation, um, we're fully through demo and to the point where uh most of the underground roughens for plumbing have been addressed, and we'll be getting uh the floor poured back here very soon. So we're now at a at a good time to uh move forward with the furniture. We reviewed this with all the staff departments that are gonna be down in the phase-one area, and uh we're ready to go. Everything's included in the packet, and these will be installed, acquired and installed roughly if everything uh goes well with the current construction timeframe, early April.
Very good, questions for Matt, yes, Eric?
Couple of quick questions, we bid this out, didn't we, Matt?
So this is on uh the state contract, so this is state bid pricing.
Gotcha.
Um, and what we wanted to do too with All Mix having the state bid pricing for this manufacturer, it allows us now to be consistent between public safety and this building, and even with Greenbelt Landing, we're looking at trying to get it all under one vendor for maintenance and service uh reasons. Um, and so this will be a continuation of that, but it's under the state contract pricing, so.
What are we doing with all the rest of the current furniture inventory that we have right now for desks and things of that nature?
Uh, most of, a number of it was uh recycled and discarded, but we did have uh some that we still have uh over in the Harbach Center um that we will, we've been trying to, it's been hard to uh sell some of it on gov deals just in terms of really getting realistic pricing. A lot of it is gonna be recycled and scrapped, um unfortunately, but just in terms of the age of the furniture and those systems, it wasn't uh getting much value in terms of putting it on uh gov deals, but we're doing that where we can. But we've uh we've kept kind of the repurposed a a number of things in some other uh facilities, but we do have a little bit of a a stock yet over at the Harbach Center in the basement, so.
Perhaps before we could recycle that, we could put something out for if citizens wanted to to utilize that. You know, I I hate to throw things away like that, but so, you know, before we did that, perhaps we could put something out where citizens, if they wanted a new desk or something of that nature, or a chair or some of that nature, that they could utilize that before we discarded them.
Yeah, we can look at that with what what we have left.
Right.
Anything else for Matt, otherwise we're looking for a resolution?
Move the resolution, second.
Motion, a second on the resolution, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote and would clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Next up, we have the potential third consideration of ordinance number eleven seventy-two, Doug.
Uh, thank you, at this point, uh, we are at third consideration of the proposed ordinance. Additionally, we have the uh resolution approving the program guidelines available for your consideration as well. Uh, we have not received any additional questions um or concerns regarding the ordinance or the program itself. Staff is ready to uh make recommendation for approval of both of those, move forward and begin the implementation of the next six-year cycle.
Uh, question, you go ahead, Eric.
Just one quick comment, you know, and working on that committee with with the property owners and 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 staff, I think we got a good, uh, this is a good product. And uh I really like to get the input from landlords and in into this, to get their their thoughts on this as well. So I thought it was a, it was a job well done.
We're looking for the third consideration unless there's further discussion.
I do have a comment, and it was raised earlier that we potentially should think about having additional inspection staffing available to not fall behind over the next six years. And so I don't know that we're ready to make that conclusion today, but I think we should make note of paying attention to that and um potentially six years isn't going to be frequently enough for some types of properties.
So are you suggesting staff investigate that and report back to us?
I would encourage that.
So I think Michael was suggesting that as well?
Yeah, right.
I mean, we've talked about that in the past, and I know, I I know I've said, I always thought six years was a little long. Um, that, you know, four or five years felt more reasonable. Um, I I did, it did come down to funding and staffing and how much burden did we put on on Doug and his team? Um, and, you know, I I do think there are provisions in there for when we do have problematic properties that we can go back more often, so it's not like all properties are only getting looked at once every six years. The the problematic ones are getting looked at more often if necessary, is that accurate, Doug?
Uh, the proposed program does afford that opportunity.
Okay, so it it is a bit of a middle ground, but I agree that I I do think six years is is long, I always thought that. And I I, in my opinion, four or five years would, probably ideally four.
So would you be comfortable with having staff do some research on what the common span is and then report back, Doug, does that work for you?
Um, yes, I I will just say kind of two things.
Um, I've got an idea.
We, as part of this process and give you the information with respect to what our neighbors are doing in terms of their programs, we are absolutely on the long side of it. Um, again, I'm not sure that we have really very good metrics to say does West Des Moines' three-year program result in a better outcome than our six-year program? Um, so I'm not sure that the comparisons are really overly valuable. I think it really does come down to your expectations uh and whether or not that is being met with our current rental program and the product that's out there itself. Again, I think the big issue is, um, as we've gone through this two cycles now, um, the types of problems that we're generally seeing in these properties are relatively minor issues, things like smoke detectors, GFCIs, uh handrails, you know, relatively minor items, and we are not seeing a lot of repeat violations. Um, so certainly from a staff-level perspective and and then uh as Councilmember Klein alluded to with the discussions with the the uh property owners, felt like the cost-to-benefit, we are probably at an appropriate spot, adding the additional tools to uh leverage when we do have circumstances arise. Uh, we have added those and think that uh given that opportunity to let those play out, uh, those will be useful. Uh, all of that being said, what's in front of you is a proposed six-year program for implementation. Uh, what I would say though is we can get going with this program, get going through the first, if you will, two-year cycle part of it. And if y'all said, hey, we wanna go to four years, there's nothing that would prevent you or stop you from saying, we're gonna amend the program mid-cycle. Right, the six-year cycle is simply what we have suggested as a reasonable way to administer the program. You wanna change your mind two years from now, not that big a deal.
Yeah, and if I remember correctly, when you first presented this to us, the metrics all looked pretty good. And so there was no like, you know, red flag alarm that we had to overhaul this program immediately. Um, but to Mike's point, this is becoming, there are more and more of these that we may have to deal with in the future. So I I think it's something that we need to at least look at and be prepared to look at it at some point down the line.
So at what point should we look at this, should we ask Doug to flag it in two years?
I would say two years, based upon the conversations like Doug said, there isn't any problems right now. Mike brought up that, and I think it's valid that. Mike brought up that, and I think it's valid that down the road, there certainly might be, but right now it's all small stuff. It's smoke detectors and there's not any big red flags.
So maybe you put a flag in two years, you report how we're doing, what and
Then we can look at it as strategic planning.
What cost would be to go from six to five or whatever at that time?
Well, can I ask a question related to this? One of the things that seems to be happening, and I may be wrong about it, but I'm sensitive to the need for attainable housing, you know, keeping people housed since I serve on the Housing Solutions Alliance and we have plenty of people reaching a point where they can't attain housing. It's worth thinking through, but it seems that we're surprised sometimes when homes all of a sudden end up with lots of cars parked outside because whether we know it or not, they're leasing those rooms out. And so that's some of what I'd like to know that we have sufficient staff time to investigate. Are they appropriately informing us that it's a cast home, some kind of a rental facility? How are we keeping track of that? I think those are some of the issues that we were considering a few items ago and relate to this. So I'd just like to know that we're able to stay on top of that somehow. I'm not really talking about the smoke alarm issue. It's the parking and how the homes are being changed because that does have some impact on the neighborhood.
The way I would answer that question is we probably get somewhere between, let's just call it a dozen a year. Inquiries from neighborhoods where maybe there is a suspected home being used for rent, maybe because it has a few extra cars or something is sparking the attention of the neighborhood. It is not out of the norm for us to, once we receive that that communication, because again, we're not out looking at every residential, every 7,000 properties in the city. So it is purely going to be a complaint or an inquiry basis from a resident. I don't think we have not gone and started an investigation in any more than a week for any complaint that comes in. So I, it's not an issue of do we have staff capacity to chase down the inquiry? I will say in many cases, getting that initial intake in the investigation, again, certainly happens within the week. We are very good about communicating back with the people that have made the the inquiry. What then transpires is it may take weeks or months to kind of sort out the details, right? Some of these situations are fluid, transient in nature. We're not, again, going to be able to sit on a property and kind of wait for someone to show up type of a situation. So I certainly can appreciate that there may be some frustration that maybe it takes too long. But again, that really isn't a function of staff capacity that simply process. And again, I don't think you all may be a better better judge of it, but at least from my perspective, I really don't think that we are not on top of that.
Other questions or comments? What we're looking for is a third consideration.
I would move that ordinance number one one seven two be considered for the third time, placed on its passage and adopted.
Second.
Motion second for third consideration. Further discussion. Seeing none, will the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero. Ordinance number one one seven two is declared to have been enacted. Next would be the resolution.
I move the resolution, approving updated rental housing program guidelines, fee schedule, rental owner checklist and rental owner inspection guides.
Second.
Motion second on the resolutions. Further discussion. Seeing none, will the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Doug. Next up, we have flood mitigation. Doug.
Thank you. Excited to share with you tonight the FEMA-funded hazard mitigation project that we've been working on for the last 12 months around University Boulevard. As you may recall, this particular project is not really looking at our current flood risk. We've kind of done that. We know what that situation is. This project was really starting to give us the opportunity to think about what is the future. So if we are successful in resolving the flood risk for for the particular properties in that area, what is next for that neighborhood? How do we take this circumstances, this bad situation that the city has dealt with for many decades and turn into a situation in which we can be proud of the neighborhood that's there to the point where the community appreciates the assets, understands that it is part of the Clive DNA, and then really ultimately is comfortable living in a space without fear of flooding. So really, that's been the goal of this planning process. I had gone into it hoping for some type of home run, if you will, where's the big swing that's going to magically solve this problem? I'll give you the spoiler alert. It doesn't exist. We've dug deep. We've not found the home run. But I will tell you that the things that we've been talking about up to this point, I think are truly real. There are many, many opportunities for this neighborhood to transition, truly become a place that is uniquely linked between land use, water resources and the people. Something that is, again, very different than many places in the metro. Certainly, potentially in Iowa as well. So excited to go through this. We've got Mimi Wagner, who is the project lead for Confluence, to kind of walk you through some of our findings. And we'll kind of talk you through kind of the big picture, what the opportunities are. And then talk a little bit about how we might accomplish getting those big opportunities in in this neighborhood space over time.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's great to be here. Let me, okay, arrows, right? Okay, so here's the agenda, just a quick, we're going to do a quick review. We're going to walk through the alternatives that we studied to come to the conclusions that we've come to in the recommendations.
Get it in presentation mode, yeah? There you go.
Let me just
Sideways.
Let me just say too that I have Joe Wallen, I believe, is calling in and he's with Bar Engineering. He's here as backup if we have questions on the flood modeling as discussed.
Oh, boy. Joe, you're on the right thing. There we go.
Good, thanks very much. Okay, so just a quick review. We're going to show you the work that we did this summer. It was a long, dry summer. And then we're going to look at some floodplain studies and then some future land use before we before we wrap it up. So the last time that I met with you on this topic was just about a year ago. It was the, I think, the Fourth of December. We had a work session together. We asked you about this neighborhood and this site and the things that were important to you. And these phrases and words are things that we took away from that conversation. And these are things that we applied throughout the past year in helping Doug and you develop a way forward. So I want to keep those in mind. Great process or great progress over the past five years. This slide kind of takes you back to the beginning of even before the last flood. And just want to say that since 2020, nearly half of the buyout properties have been acquired. And that is an amazing commitment and investment. And with this pace, by 2030, possibly all of them could be acquired and the open space could be available for you to develop as you are interested in. It's still a ways out and there's a lot of work to do, but in the blink of the eye, that's going to be here. And we want the city to be able to feel ready to transform this critical part of the community and the green belt into what exactly what you want it to be. So speaking of the future, we want you to be able to achieve the vision that you create. So as you move forward from the end of this study into future phases, you're going to dial in. Most of it, that dialing in will happen on the north side of university. And as you do that, we want you to feel prepared to take advantage of opportunities or leveraging partnerships that may occur as they occur, just like you've been doing to date. And to do that, you'll need to continue investment in the buyout and also getting a handle on what it will take to achieve the vision that you've created. And that includes additional design permitting, analysis, planning, chasing funding and so on. So the current study takes everything from the 2022 study and put it puts it through, put it through a very fine sieve. So 2022 opened up these studied alternatives, came to the conclusion that the buyout was the right thing to do. And we took all that information, updated the flood model, made it have a much greater resolution, fine-tuned the design, have we now have preliminary plans for Walnut Creek and North Walnut Creek and developed some initial concepts for the area north of university. So you could start to imagine what what's possible there. And we're going to review a little bit on all of those things as we move forward. So the first thing is the existing 100-year floodplain. As I said, the model was updated. The topographic changes that had occurred since 2020 or weren't included in that model were updated for this model. And we just saw minor fluctuations in the floodline. And what that meant is we made some buyout tweaks is what I would call them, very small changes. So the orange red line that you see, polygon that you see on top is the 2022 detailed study area. The darker gray underneath is the current 2025 buyout. And as you can see, we added a property on 81st Street. We removed one on Drake and we added one on Northwest 75th. There is a rear yard of another property on 75th that's removed from the buyout. It's still included in the project boundary, but it doesn't have a residential structure on it. So we'll talk about that in just in just a bit. But essentially, the big thing that came out of this improved modeling, I think, this is, and I'm not the engineer, but we got a better understanding of that railroad bridge because that is a siphon that which all the flows go or meant much of the flow goes through from Walnut Creek. And before now, there really wasn't a good understanding of what was going on and we'll talk, I'll talk about why that's important in just a minute. So again, the existing 100-year floodplain, there's two things that we want to point out on this drawing to you. The first is the wedge that's within Clive on the south side of university. And previous flood models have also identified water at the 100-year event coming right up to the edges of the building or very near it. But with the greater resolution of our flood model, the concern is even more elevated. In terms of this property being considered for redevelopment, which is kind of where we were thinking previously, we're feeling very cautious about that. If there was a need to evacuate, if this flood occurred suddenly, if there were users in those structures, say children or people that had, you know, not able access to vehicles quickly, it could be a really, a really situation to avoid. So we're thinking that that particular, when it, when it is time, that particular area of land, rather than being redeveloped, might be better used if it makes some kind of contribution to flood mitigation. The next thing is Windsor Heights. We didn't see any significant changes in the existing flooding conditions from what had been projected with previous modeling. And we certainly, you know, it's not improved, it's not any worse. There are a couple dozen structures within the regulatory floodplain in Windsor Heights and just not a lot of mitigation opportunities available for them. We did look, we're going to talk in just, I think, the next slide or two. I'm going to show you, talk through some of the things that we looked at, trying to understand if there's anything Clive could do to help Windsor Heights with this situation. So let's talk about the long summer. So we studied many, many alternative models and the point of this, so a model is, and I, you know this probably, but just so we're all on the same level, small page, is it's basically math, right? It's a calculation of volumes and velocities and 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 water. And so we're looking at the existing geography, a certain amount of water and what happens as that water moves over the land and disperses. So it's math, essentially. And what we thought we would do, so south of university, the triangle was identified in 2022. If we cut the grade of that floodplain, bring it down four to six feet, remeander the channel, that that would have a good benefit, a very strong benefit for Clive in terms of flood storage and reducing flood levels and and extent. What we thought is, well, if that was good, maybe we could cut some more on the north side of university. And we kind of drew that red box and took 100,000 cubic yards. Maybe that's about eight feet deep at that location. It's a big, big amount of soil, but we took that out in the model and said, if we excavated that and that was flood storage, in the case of a 100-year flood, all the other times it would be dry, although it would be a very dark hole. We, what would that do? And one would think that would help everyone, right, from a flood standpoint? And it did help Clive. We think that the Indian Hills neighborhood might possibly see some potential reduced flood depths. And around the tank farm, it reduced flood level a couple of feet, one or two feet. But it actually made conditions worse for Windsor Heights. The other thing is we took a small amount out from the north walnut, 25,000 cubic yards out from the north walnut channel as well. And it's pretty cool. I mean, it's not cool, but how it works is that when we created this excavation on the north side, water comes out of Walnut Creek, crosses university at about the 50-year flood, fills up that hole and water just starts moving toward the east to north walnut. And so instead of going through the railroad bridge, it can get by and around that bridge by going to north walnut and then down into north, into Walnut Creek and then into Windsor Heights. So it actually made flooding conditions worse for them when we tried to create more storage on the north side. And so going back to our, the things that we we were trying to do, we were trying to maximize the benefits for Clive and not do any harm to Windsor Heights. And so because of that, we eliminated the cut on the north side. We looked at a lot of things and this is the final sort of resolution of those things. Since we couldn't create any additional benefits for Windsor Heights by cutting, we wanted to see if we could fill some areas of the fringe of the floodplain in Clive without impacting Windsor Heights and without making the Clive situation worse. We were looking for some kind of balance. How much fill could we place without tipping that scale? So where we ended was about a 25-acre piece and it's calculated to be filled a foot above the 500-year flood level. That in combination with the floodplain cuts on Walnut Creek and the floodplain cuts and the channel work on North Walnut Creek as well. So with that, we've got about 250,000 cubic yards of soil cut on the south side and roughly that same amount being placed as fill on the north side. And we, with this arrangement, we were able to maintain the no impact, no significant impact to Windsor Heights, which was the goal. And then, so what this does is, from a benefit standpoint, gives you Walnut Creek and North Walnut Creek with access to the floodplains with the opportunity to store a lot of water and prevent flood damage in other parts as well as this redevelopment land, if that was something that you were interested in. It's, I'm going to show you in a bit, three concepts, initial concepts that we developed for the north. It's, I'm going to show you in a bit, three concepts, initial concepts that we developed for the north side. Some of them use more than 250,000 cubic yards and some use less. And it's possible that more fill could be placed. We just didn't model it. We know that this amount is, is doable with the current model. So this is the new floodplain map resulting from this 2025 work. It's pretty exciting. So the blue part is areas that were flooded before and they continue to be flooded. And the green areas are previously flooded, but no longer flooded because of the fill that we placed. So it opens up all of that land, it's just kind of a flip, right, of where the water was. And Windsor Heights sees no significant change, either from Walnut Creek or North Walnut Creek, Indian Hills, some potential limited flood depth reduction. That was not our area of focus. We noticed those things in the mapping, but that was not the specific focus. And you get this, this great zone that's up high and, and seemingly dry. And from here, I'm going to move on away from modeling. So if there's, are there any questions about those, that particular process? The point was to just dig through as many things as any of us could think of to make sure that we had the optimal cut, the optimal fill, and we got the best benefits for you.
If you put the fill in on the north side and clear up that Drake area for redevelopment, what does that do to the south side of university for the properties that are left there right now? Say you did that fill tomorrow. I'm not seeing the increase of water on the south side, which I would think would be there. And we're not seeing that, so.
Yeah, I, I, the answer to your question is, this is theoretically poof.
Cut, fill.
Right, you're using that from the south.
Yep, the reality is, it's not going to be so poofy. It'll be incremental, right?
Yeah.
So those are the things that are not studied in detail at this point. We simply needed to know what the, the bookends are. And you're going to make decisions, and then more specifically, what decisions you would want to take on the north side. You'll see a few ideas for that. But then you're going to start getting into the incremental components of where does it exactly sort out? And more specifically, how do the buyouts impact those decisions? Because again, this analysis has kind of taken that perspective just for this effort, that the buyouts are complete.
Buildings are gone.
North and south. The buyout program is complete. What do you do with the land?
Buildings are gone.
We'll, we'll kind of finish that discussion, get some temperature readings on it. And then we'll kind of come back and talk more specifically then about how the, how do you put the pieces together and address some of those potential incremental impacts?
I have one quick question, and that's just visualizing this as we see the Drake area, the part on the right side there. That surprises me that that part still shows as high as it is, coming as far south as it does. Given the impingement from both north and west. So why is that? What kind of landform is there? Is that just an extra hill or something?
You know, you're, that's a glacial moraine. There's a slope, a steep slope that we, the edge of the green is filling up to the, the top of the moraine. So the moraine is where a glacier stopped. This one isn't the part, the, the final moraine, it was a temporary one. Glacier stopped and melted, dumped a bunch of stuff, left a slope. So there's a flatter area up on top than this steep slope coming down. And what our proposal for fill did is just wedge fill in to meet the top of that sort of plateau that's naturally there.
Okay.
Yeah. So it is a, it's funny, you don't see those landforms unless you know that they're there. And then when you drive through there again, you can start to see that slope and understand what's going on. It also left us this soil that's got a high water table, it's kind of crappy, it's, that's your moraine. Anything else?
Is a 100 year flood model enough? It seems like 100 year floods happen with more frequency. So we clean this out and we rebuild it. Are we setting ourselves up for 25 years from now, we're back in the same boat?
Yeah, great question. So we also modeled, modeled the 500 year flood. And the green area is actually filled to one foot above the 500. So what, one of the goals that you said in December was we don't ever want to be in this situation here again. That wasn't exactly on the word cloud, but something like that was on there. And, yeah, right. And so that was, that was the point of that particular elevation, and it is going to be a stark when it's undeveloped and there's just that fill line. It's going to be quite obvious. Once development occurs, however that happens, I think it will just blend in like the slope that's there now.
One other thing I would like to add on that is, not with this particular study, because we'd already done the analysis, but the previous work allowed us to also look at what a future condition might look like, both in terms of increased rainfall intensity, as well as urbanization, continued urbanization of the watershed itself. So adding more impervious surface areas generates more runoff. So between more rain and more runoff, what does that look like for this space? Because of the shape of the valley that, that we're in, those extra inputs really don't dramatically change the shape just because it's a, a pretty steep valley today. So we feel fairly confident that when we're kind of talking at this point about this 500 year plus one foot, that, that's, that's very meaningful, both today as well as what we think might be the future in terms of flooding impacts here. Again, those are the types of things that we felt comfortable with at this point. If we were to move forward with a particular project in which we either have critical infrastructure or we're proposing to put neighborhoods in those spaces, you're going to want to dial into that a couple more times to make sure you feel really comfortable with it. But generally speaking, the idea here is yes, you've got a bad situation. You're working like heck to get out of it. You never want to be in this circumstance again. So we would not bring anything to you that is going to create that circumstance.
Last question is, is that green, green because it's the only dirt you can move from the south to the north? And so that's the, kind of the quantity you have to work with? Or just arbitrarily, that's?
I don't remember exactly, but I think we started at that point, like what if we just took all that soil and we put it on the other side? And that was the volume we started with. I, that's what I remember about the decision. And I think if it hadn't, if it had tipped the flood model where we were impacting Windsor Heights, we would have started pulling soil off to get it down to the amount of space that wouldn't do that. But in this particular case, it was successful.
And again, I think at this level with this study, we feel comfortable. If you're going to move forward, you're going to dial this in. There is going to be a lot finer detail. And again, probably more important is going to be the relationship or the incremental approach of the dirt. Dirt is really expensive to move. So you don't, if you have to move it, you don't want to move it far. And that's going to be a circumstance where being efficient with moving dirt and being able to be efficient because you have enough area, enough dirt to move. And that generally means acquiring everything kind of at one fell swoop and then going and doing your work. There are incremental approaches. It just takes more thought to figure out how to make that actually financially work.
So the green could be bigger. Bigger.
Potential.
Or small. Didn't go that far, but, and especially if you move dirt from outside this area, you could. I agree that dirt is very expensive to move, right? But you have one shot at moving it for the next 80 years of planning for that area. So what's the ROI over 50, 80 year period rather than a quick project that you're putting, you know, moving dirt to build a, to build a berm or something? I mean, you're building a, a small village area down here of.
Well, I think that's a great segue to.
So just be quiet and listen.
Land use question, because you get into a circumstance of that return on investment.
Yeah, right.
If you can't or don't want to put a lot of stuff, buildings, maybe you don't have the revenue to move the dirt.
Right, right.
So there is a relationship here that we're going to kind of walk you through.
So the buyout area is shown with the orange shading. And because of the changes in the floodplain of Walnut Creek and the channel itself, and also North Walnut Creek, there are areas that the city will need access to that land in order to, to accomplish this project. So we've shown those in blue. Some of them are better maybe off as acquisitions, some are maybe better off as, as, what do you call them?
Easements.
Easements, yes, thank you. I mean, some combination and that would be worked out in the future. But those are the pieces to the puzzle that you don't already own because you've got Lundberg Park and you've got the green belt on the west. So we've, have prepared three options. They are in and, in and of themselves. I doubt that any one of them will be chosen to move forward. My guess is that as usual with design, the more we give you alternatives, the more you like to start. Everybody likes to start picking and pulling and putting together a hybrid. So I just want to preface before we look at them together with that. The three options are very different conditions. They have different amounts of density, different amounts of infrastructure required, and probably return on investment in terms of tax revenue is different as well. So let's go ahead and take a look. Each one of them has, south of university, in the Walnut Creek floodplain, has the same configuration because there is, that is the only recommendation. The stream is remeandered, there are some wetlands for treating stormwater, which we daylighted out of the storm drains on university. There's a new green belt alignment and some other trails that are there situated to both offer access to the sanitary sewer that's going in and also for other opportunities for people. And the same thing on north walnut, you'll see that those concepts don't change. The other thing I want to point out is that the two pink parcels, we haven't talked about the booster pump station. And we, I just want to mention that, that we've identified two locations that are suitable for the location of that station. And one's on the east side of 75th and one is on the west side. And for the purposes of these alternatives, we've placed it always on the east side because then it opened up the rest of the land for, it didn't, it didn't interfere with any other development patterns. But we've reserved it with that dash line, so you can see how it would affect, how the design would be impacted if it were there. And then there's in gray, some low priority properties in terms of buyout. And these are some that have some flood protection now because of the way that they're built. And in each case on these concepts, you'll see in gray what would be possible if those parcels were, were evac, you know, sold and included in the project. And this first concept is all single family housing. This is the lowest density arrangement. It is the least amount of money in terms of infrastructure and probably will not generate the tax revenue to make up the difference for what has been lost because of the buyout. But in each case, you'll see that lower open space dedicated to stormwater management, water quality enhancement, maybe some habitat sorts of things, as well as open space and recreation. We really thought, we went back to the 86th Street neighborhood plan. We took those goals, enhanced or in, improved water quality, flood resilience, new recreation, open space, green belt connection to that neighborhood, green belt connection to Windsor Heights and neighborhood connection to Windsor Heights, and built those into, to these things. So you'll see just different arrangements and ideas of uses that could be in the open space, which is generally obviously lower in elevation. So concept one. Concept two increases the density. We're still in that, shooting for that middle range that Clive is looking for, medium density. So the, the orange red is multifamily housing. The purple is mixed use. And the orange units are townhouses. So you can see that the north, what I like about this particular concept is that all the north-south streets are maintained from university north. None of them are blocked or cut off or changed. And that will make it really easy to navigate, I think. This concept does require more infrastructure. It will be more expensive, but it will also generate more revenue because of all the housing that's.
The yellow is single?
Those are all single family townhouses. And then the last one is more mixed use, maybe less apartments and a great deal of townhomes. But the exciting thing about concept three is, and I know this has been sort of on the table and off the table over the years, but we took University Boulevard and just moved it up on top of the 500 year plus one foot mound, and then brought it back down and closed the existing, that existing segment in between those two intersections in between 75th and 81st, is that 81st? Yep, so that piece of the road is gone. And what that does functionally is puts a good chunk of university above the 500 year flood elevation, instead of it going underwater at the 50 year flood. So you would still be able to get out of that area evacuating by going to the north because down south to the existing parts of university would still be, would still be having flooding issues. But it, what it does that's super exciting is that the open space in the development is now correct, connected directly to the green belt, open space. And the only thing between them is the railroad, the tracks that are there today. And this is pretty exciting, also probably pretty expensive. But we also think it would probably likely have the greatest tax revenue generation possible. So, questions about these? It's three.
And again, just want to reiterate, this project and what we're talking about tonight and ultimately with the plan adoption is not asking for a choose one. This is simply a set of illustrations to, again, give you a sense of, of the opportunities.
Yep.
A lot more detail have to go into, economic analysis, considerations on how to move this much dirt, utilities, et cetera, et cetera. But again, I think the purpose is to give you that sense. If you want to pursue that goal of trying to recapture some of the lost tax base, there are opportunities. Something like this, one of these plans, or again, a combination, or maybe, maybe again, altogether different, but you have opportunities if you want to pursue it.
We've gotten the sense, you know, from the December meeting and, and in the year in between, working with Doug, that this part of the community is really important. It's really critical. It's the oldest part of town, it's where Clive began. The green belt, this is a part of the green belt that can be made, made over in a sense with this mitigation. And so there's an enormous opportunity that you will have in the blink of an eye to, to begin thinking about. But, and, and, and even though you have made a lot of progress, there is a lot of work to be done yet, as, as I said earlier. So what we'd like to do, we'd like to talk just about maybe some incremental neighborhood development, kind of area by area. So we call the south part, the south of university area one. And those, that's a list of things that could be started anytime that would help get a jump. So there are utilities, there's a new WRA sewer going through this area, which you're probably aware of. There's a power line that comes down from university, traverses through those, the backs of those lots and comes back up. Those require coordination. And the utility line or the overhead power moving it, the. the sewer further coordinating with the stream channel and the re-meanders to make sure that they're, that that the sewer is protected and the stream is in good, you know, in a good design state. There's the Eighty Second Street Trail that could, it's coming down from Eighty Second Street, crossing University, coming adjacent to the Tank Farms South and then joining up with the Green Belt. That is something that could be started, that the piece of that trail that's been planned for quite a while could be established. And it could be done in a way so that the future excavation doesn't, doesn't impact it. The other thing is that western part of the Green Belt, outside of the buyout area, there is stream stabilization planned for Walnut Creek from that point west. And that and the trail improvements, whatever trail improvements, whatever identity, like if you want city identity, gateway sorts of things, that could be accomplished in this interim period too. While you're, while you're putting your ducks in a row. There'll be quite a bit of coordination with West Moyn and with those property owners. And the last thing on the list is advancing these, the plans for Area One to the sixty percent level. They're at thirty percent now. But if funding would become available from some source, having those plans ready and on the shelf would make you eligible, could possibly make you eligible for that money. And so that's part of being ready for these opportunities and leveraging partnerships that um that might occur. So I'll talk about Area Two and then Doug's gonna take Area Three, the larger um north of University.
Before we go to two, I'm sorry. Is Area One the prerequisite to getting to these other areas?
No.
It's not.
There's pieces that can be done. The excavation is necessary, I would say, to get the fill placed or some.
I mean, that's kind of what I was envisioning in my head. So we'd have to get rid of or help Wittern and these others move so that we could then get to that fill. Is that before we could do anything in these other?
We can do thi- some things. We just can't do the fill.
Piece of it, though.
That would be like the best case scenario, right? Again, all the buildings are gone, the land's available and we can just start moving dirt.
Which is probably not realistic.
Right. So this Area One, um the dirt problem, if you will, is about a ten million dollar problem. If it has to be hauled off to, say, Milwaukee. That's a solvable thing. We can figure it out. The area on the north side, uh that area would be the greatest spot to take the dirt, least amount of distance. But it's also not the only way that we could generate dirt economically. The south side of the north side of the Boulevard, we were simply in our modeling, pretending that that grade stayed as is. And then just putting the fill up to match up to the north boundary. You could dig those water features, for example, to generate the dirt that you need, but then do the fill and then come back and do number one area whenever that happened. So that's where I'm saying that um, you know, once we kind of get through this, get your temperature, that we're on the right path. We've got the mix and match and and kind of the strategy and how this thing might play out in a couple of different scenarios. Uh we've been working on how that will play out. But also didn't wanna get ahead of it until y'all had a chance to say that we're, we're on to something. But yes, it 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 becomes kind of a an iterative puzzle making process.
Right. But the things that are listed could all start happening anytime now before the excavation, just prepping for it um and getting some of those things that are completely separate taken care of, like the West Green Belt, for example. Great questions. So go to Area Two. Area Two is the North Walnut Creek Corridor up to, generally up to, we think of it up to some Northwest Seventy Fifth Street. So I've got the two pink dots, which are the booster pump station alternate locations. And here's a, a small list of things that, that could be started. In North Walnut, that uh we showed a trail connection, a bridge coming across the stream and a Windsor Heights trail connection down to University. That's something that would be really valuable to connect that neighborhood right now. And this stream work, this is less excavation, less of a channel, a lift on the channel um economically. These, this is something where you may be able to find money to do this from grant sources or other, other places. You could do this independently, completely of the Area One. So selecting the booster pump site and if the east site was chosen, um it will need to have fill added. And we were thinking, well, some of the Area Two excavation for the floodplain could go right there. If it was, if things were organized and, and it worked out that way. I mean, either location, honestly, the fill could, could go there. But we recommend advancing those plans for Area Two so that you are ready for whatever funds might become available. So uh whether it's trail or stream or flood. And then, of course, connection with Windsor Heights because North Walnut comes down, it's kind of right back and forth on the boundary with Windsor Heights. So um yeah, that's Area Two.
And again, as Mimi indicated, that Area Two, those set of things could happen tomorrow. And in fact, uh in some degree, we're already kind of working on the booster station. We kind of call it Booster Station for short, but it's the Water Pump Station that we have on University Boulevard right next to Five One Five. Uh that facility is uh not located in a very good spot from a flood mitigation standpoint. It's also aging out in terms of its useful life. So uh we are waiting for determination of uh funding, hazard mitigation funding to support the relocation of that facility. Uh we think that somewhere on Seventy Fifth Street uh makes the most sense from the water utility standpoint. And then if we can find a site that is in essence high enough to uh make us all feel comfortable that we're putting a critical facility in safe spot. Uh those things are happening now. Uh so putting that in combination with some of these other multiple benefits, whether or not it's the trail or in conjunction with the buyout or in conjunction with stream restoration and the habitat stuff, um those things can all play together. The Area Three, um this is the one that really requires more determination from the city. What does it want to do? The other spaces are pretty much, there, there's not a question of reuse of the property for development. South of the Boulevard, just not a good plot, spot to put a building. Uh it's floodplain. It really needs to be made into floodplain for the future. Similarly, uh the North Walnut Creek Boundary Area. We obviously don't control much of it, but um really much of it should be converted back to floodplain uh in and of itself. So the areas that we do have control over, those spaces ought to be flood storage capacity. So really no options there. What happens in the third space, you know, again, these are the things that we've been talking about for, for many years now as part of the neighborhood planning process. We know principally, uh we do not want to fill the space and create an impact on Windsor Heights. We've checked that box. That's, that's nothing. We, we feel very confident we can come up with a solution that will not have a negative impact to Windsor Heights. Uh then you have the question of you're gonna lose thirty-five, forty million dollars of tax base through the buyout program? Gosh, it'd be awful nice to figure out how to get that back. So then that's where we're kind of at is, well, how do we do it safely? We don't wanna put people in, in harm's way in the future. How do we get some tax base? And how do we do it in a way that doesn't hurt Windsor Heights? And then finally, how do you do it in a way that both supports as well as leads to neighborhood success? Uh so lots of variables that still have to be played out for this Area Three. But it is a question or in terms of uh how staff sees this moving forward, it is back to that fundamental question of, you could just make it into a green space. Call it a day, make a nice park out of it and the neighborhood would be extremely happy for today. Whether or not that is what's best for the community, you know, that's an outstanding question that needs to be addressed. And then once that's determined, going through a, a very deliberate process that's inclusive of the existing neighborhood, the future neighborhood, the community, um to really nail down what type of concept we would like to achieve out there would absolutely need to happen. This planning process, again, is not intended to say, pick this option. That wasn't our purpose. We know to get to a community-based decision, there's a lot more work that has to go into it if you even wanna go there. That's the question for this planning process is, if you want to go there, then we build out the game plan to figure out how to get the consensus on the land use. But in between that time and and that future effort, there are things that we're gonna continue to do, whether or not it's a temporary park space, leverage the land that's available for neighborhood use. We obviously have a number of properties still to acquire and a lot of existing residents to continue to be good, good partners and stewards of the adjacent land uh around that area. Uh so it's not like we're not gonna do anything. Um but it is a situation where um if we're going to move forward with some type of development in this space, we need to set that up because it is a fair, fairly long runway to get sorted out and becomes pretty critical in that question of how to make the dirt problem work. So that's kind of the, the, the long and the short of it on number three. Again, not looking for decisions tonight. But we'll be looking for some future direction on, again, what is our appetite in that, there's kind of four bullet point balances of impacting Windsor Heights. Uh utilizing the green space, creating tax base and doing it in a way that uh is supportive of both the existing neighborhood as well as the future neighborhood. So we threw a lot at you again tonight. No decisions are necessary. Uh thoughts, comments, critiques, um issues, concerns, those are all super at this point. Uh we are looking to kind of wrap this project up. Uh come back to you in a month's time with kind of the polished material. Um and also have a little more discussion around kind of the implementation parts, the strategy parts. Uh again, kind of setting the stage for those future directions. Uh that's really the next thirty days for us. Uh but in intervening time, uh again, we very much would welcome any questions or comments or, or other thoughts.
Michael, do you wanna have any?
Not tonight.
Just a, maybe a dumb question, but in, in those three concepts, it looked like um we had redirected and re-meandered the screen or the Walnut Creek stream further north, closer to University Boulevard. Is that, is that right?
Uh Walnut Creek?
Yes, Walnut Creek.
Yes.
So in, like, in my non-engineering mind, that seems counterintuitive to trying to keep flooding away from university. So wha- what's the point of that?
The one thing that doesn't show very well in this simple plan view is the elevation. So that triangle, south of University Boulevard, the stream is meandered in a pa- in a way that it is a stable plan form. Uh so that doesn't erode and turn back into the U-shaped channel that it is today. That is really unimportant for the flood mitigation part. The important part for the flood mitigation is that entire area is in essence being cut down approximately five to six feet.
That's the soil that's going up.
Right, sure.
So, so even though the stream is meandering, it's now got a giant bathtub to work with. Uh so you're getting the best of both worlds, basically. You're getting the flood mitigation through the removal of the soil. And then you've got a new plan form for the stream that is stable. So that can be used as an asset for the Green Belt Trail for people to go and actually access the water, splash in it, play in it. Uh again, feel like it's part of the community and not just a you know, an open drainage channel.
So just speaking for myself, um I, I like the concepts. Um like you said, don't wanna pick one right now. I do know which one I think that the neighborhood would want. Um and I, I don't think there's any question about that, but um but I, I do think this is the direction we should be moving towards um in trying to activate this, this space and and redevelop it and make it into a, a, you know, a really nice amenity for the, for that neighborhood and for the community at large. So um I do like the direction we're going with this personally.
Eric, on the mixed use, what were you thinking of in there?
So again, um uh Mimi didn't use it. My words are gentle density, right? It, it's always going to be about finding a, a form, a building form that feels right. And you know it when you see it. And that is mostly something that has some character to it. It's not too tall. Uh isn't just a, you know, a blank wall. It's something that, again, I'm sure you've all been in places where you've walked around and boy, and said, wow, this is, this feels right. That's what we'd be trying to accomplish here. So whether or not it's one story or two story or three stories or, you know, blend of all of that, um it's really about creating the place more so than saying, you know, single family, townhome or multifamily. It's, it's about getting the design, getting the place right.
There is housing, um there's housing in the mix of each of those buildings. And I can't remember if it's, what there, there's a minimum percentage that they've calculated and I don't remember what it is. Twenty-five percent of the space of each building could be multifamily.
Richard, are you okay with Jay and Ellen here that uh they're gonna compete with your lazy river? Put a free one down there.
Anyone else have any questions, comments?
I, I do. Uh is traffic factored into this? Because I'm looking at particularly, Concept Three has a lot more people and stuff. And do we, is that area designed to hold that many more people at any given time? Or is that outside the scope or something to address at a later time?
There's parking along both sides of that street for open space use.
Okay.
But you can address more like what's happening on University outside of Clive and what's, what's coming down the pike.
Yeah. So my answer is uh the specific analysis is outside of this project. My professional judgment is the current configuration of University Boulevard is a three-lane roadway section. It has more than enough capacity. We could put a significantly larger amount of cars on that section and have no problems at all. What's happening at east and west of it isn't really changing at this point. So we are pretty much at the status quo uh long term. And really, um if we were to go down this type of a path, you have to flip the switch that this is no longer intended to be a commercial throughway. This would be intended to become a neighborhood street. Which I know it, 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 it'd be real hard to get your mind wrapped around it at this moment. Uh but that's truly what we would be trying to accomplish is a complete repositioning. Uh taking advantage of, again, some of the work that Windsor Heights is doing to the east, which is trying to create more of a pedestrian-oriented or multimodal type of road system. It's sort of okay-ish. Uh but this would be taking it to that next level of, of really trying to make sure that the road supports the neighborhood. Not the other way around. Not the other way around. And yes, there'd be a lot more analysis that'd be necessary.
And Doug, that railroad bridge, which is a pinch point. Is. Since they're a sovereign nation, it's. It's not going to change or we can't. I mean, one, is it safe still? Can you make an argument that it's not safe? And can you make an argument that it is? Is doing worse harm of flooding. And so shouldn't something be done? And I, I, I think I know the answer to that, but has that been discussed with the rail?
Sort of. So I mean, there, there's a couple of variables there. It is absolutely a constriction. So just simply the old size of that opening is absolutely a constriction. So it's causing. Backwater flooding depth issue behind the bridge for Clive. If you open it up. Maybe it's good for us. Not so good for down there. So there is kind of always going to be the balance point. When you squeeze a balloon, it's, you know. It's going to go somewhere. So you have to balance that question. In terms of the bridge itself, when we did this analysis with the first phase. The rail line, obviously, as we all know, is a very underutilized facility. So it's not generating very much revenue. Certainly not enough to support any significant capital investment. They barely put enough into it just to keep a train on the track. So the idea of having. The financial resources to rebuild this bridge, which would be. Many, many, many millions of dollars for a very low volume railroad. That's probably just not going to happen. I think the more likely outcome is at some point the rail goes away. And then you have the question of. What do you do with the bridge? Spend a lot of money to get rid of it. Use it for a bike path, you know, I mean, those kinds of considerations. Ultimately, and, and this is what we concluded at the first. Phase of the project a couple of years ago is. We have so little control over that. We have to solve our own problem. And that's what again was one of those variables into saying, we just need to do the buyouts. Cause we can't. We're not going to get a fix by the bridge or more storage or digging this or that. So to some degree, the bridge kind of becomes a tomorrow's problem. It doesn't help us today. You know, somebody else can debate. Taking it out and what's that going to do to Windsor Heights? It doesn't hurt us. It doesn't really help us with this plan.
Any other questions on this? Otherwise we'll see you all back in a month. Before we move on to the next agenda items, it's been a couple of hours. I think we should probably take a short five minute break.
Yes.
Be back at eight eighteen.
Yeah. Whoops, my bad.
Meet with her next week.
Are we good?
It's.
Yes. We'll resume from our recess and we'll pick back up with Pete on state legislative priority.
Significant.
Oh.
Pete's busy wandering around.
That's good. Give it to me for a while. Give it to me for a while.
Oh, yeah.
Mayor councils, it's not, I'm happy to present our draft state legislative priorities. You know that consistency year over year, session over session is important because legislation frequently takes multiple sessions to get accomplished. This year, we, as we did last, have started with what we think is going to be probably the largest issue facing cities that the legislature will take up, which is a changing property tax environment. It could also extend to other revenue sources as well, such as lost and tax increment by financing, which you all discussed earlier tonight. Related to the new fortress bank project. The concepts are the same that we led with and the bolded items are the ones that we believe are most important for us to lift up. Top of the list is value for taxes paid. The much of the discussion is sometimes, I think, a little too narrow when we're talking about property taxes. Yes, they are expensive. Yes, they are complex in Iowa. Yes, they are ripe for reform. But at the end of the day. What all of us are working on together is to deliver the greatest value possible for those taxes that are paid. And make sure that they align with what residents say is most important. I think Clive has a very positive story to tell on that front. We see it in our resident survey data. And we see it with the consistent investments that you as a council have decided to make. And our built environment here in Clive, our infrastructure, our roads and so forth. So that value for taxes paid is something that we want to make sure that we preserve as a top headline. You can see then working through the rest of the. List there, some of the other bolded items. Number two has very much about growth. This isn't the truth for every community in Iowa, but when it comes to property taxes and growth. This council has been very clear that you would like to see development be able to pay for itself. There are some proposals that we've heard that would in effect eliminate the city's ability to capture enough of that value so that development pays for itself. We're having worked now multiple sessions with multiple legislators. We think that this concept of making sure there's some sort of carve out for growth has got some real traction. We'd like to see it continue into the next session. Any questions about these first points related to property taxes? Very similar to last year. Okay. So those are the big ones. Page two, also important, but probably for the docket that's in front of the legislature this year, not going to get nearly the attention, but we still want to make sure that folks know. That it's important to us. Number nine is a good example of that. Last year we had our state rep, Rep Con First and her, her staff. Graciously drafted some actual legislation. That we have in pocket now to be able to take to legislators if they're interested. This is good common sense proposal. Because when our plow operators are out there on the street, they really are in the midst of some emergency operations. And so the same consideration that a firefighter or a police officer get when they're in those emergency operations conditions. But they get hit or they are, their vehicle hits another property or another vehicle. There's an opportunity for them to then not have that just on their personal record. We think it makes sense to extend that same type of. Consideration to our snowplow operators when they're out there when nobody else wants to, right? The last point, number ten, we should call out because this actually may get some attention at the state level. We certainly are hearing it here at the local level. And so it's good for us to indicate to our partners at the state house that the same way that they take it importantly, so do we. Has to do with e-bikes and making sure we're doing some common sense work to keep the use of those devices safe. In the end, the right place and within the right conditions. The last points are sort of a laundry list of many different water resources topics. You don't need to. Spend much time in around Clive. You could just watch the presentation right before this to know that when it comes to water and all of its facets, Clive has got to pay careful attention. Has got to lead and help direct this state to a more positive water resources future. Whether that's flood mitigation, water quality, drinking water or water as an amenity, which we all enjoy when we go down to the Clive Green Belt. No changes in that area compared to where we were last year. And with that, I'd be happy to take questions.
Questions for Pete?
I just have a quick comment and that is under number eleven A. That is so important. I'm so glad to see that on here that we support. I will without taking local option sales and services tax. To do it. Because that has been the approach for the last few years and. I'm really hoping you can get the attention of more partners who are supporting I will because they do not seem to understand. That. And one thing I'll also say is. Some of those funds are what are actually accomplishing today. Some of what they're hoping to see the state do. So. The state doesn't plan to use I will dollars. For the kinds of things we're doing. So, or that was initially expected to be accomplished under I will. So I think. Without getting into any more detail with the limitations of time tonight. Yeah, it is so important and I'm a little worried with such a long list. That that gets lost. And so it's worth thinking about some certain priorities where we really do. Need to be weighing in and educating our partners who sometimes have more clout than a single city does. So kind of thinking that through. Is valuable because I think there'll be some discussion about that this year.
Just going to try and pull up actually, the mayor directed us this morning to see if we couldn't get this tight. Make it a little bit even more visually easy to consume as opposed to having to flip the page and. Exactly to your point, Councilmember Judkins. When I put it into chat GPT, it asked to have a little, add a little design feature to it and condenses even further. It was able to do that, but did in the water area, keep the lost reference and I will. And also preserved it in the first, at the top of the page where we talk about the importance of lost in general as. A current revenue source that needs to be preserved for cities, keeping in mind that half of those dollars that we receive. Are already going directly to property tax relief.
Other questions or comments? Are we fairly comfortable with the direction here?
Our intent then will be to bring back that more condensed version to pair with this longer one. So that you've all got something you can walk around with in your pocket when we're engaging with all of our partners. And you can count on me and Matt and many others on staff to be. Attentive and engaged and ready to help our state lawmakers make some good policy choices in the months ahead.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Ponds.
The Weaver Law.
I know it seems like we've probably talked about this already, but we've only just talked about one Shadow Creek Pond. So we're ready to talk about the other six ponds here in the city. So. I will try to keep it fairly brief, but one of the things we discovered when we started talking about the Shadow Creek Pond is that. Really need to kind of have some guiding policy on how we handle management of all these ponds. So. The council at your strategic planning prioritize upon policies that as part of your priorities this year. So we're here to kind of talk about. High level, what we're looking at from a policy standpoint for how we manage ponds in the city. So just a quick overview, the city owns six stormwater ponds across the community. We have partial ownership of a seventh. Across the street here, we share ownership of the Greenbelt Landing Pond with Walnut Reed, Walnut Ridge. And you'll probably know a majority of them are up in the Wilds District and most of them have single family homes or other residential backing up to them. So our, our neighbors are very important in how we want to manage these ponds. So just a, a quick map to give everyone a little bit of familiarity. Here are the six of them. They're located in the Wilds area. So a lot of them are on the little Walnut Creek Green Belt there. Then we have Circina's pond in Circina Park, and then we have the Schuler Pond down there at Douglas and Verkshire. And then finally we have the Greenbelt Landing Pond. You can see the map here. The green is the area that we own. And then the area to the east of that is what is owned by Walnut Ridge. We have recreation easements for the recreation amenities out there on that property. So proposed management guidelines. So in water vegetation, this is something we've talked extensively about at Circina Park and. I think what we've learned that most people are going to want to have mostly vegetation free pond water near their house. And that's one of the things that we spent a lot of time talking about in regards to Shadow Creek Pond. And they also want to have limited veget. In water vegetation along the shoreline. There's a couple of different reasons for that. Ability to get people down there to allow them to fish along the edge of the pond. As well as just sight, visibility and sightlines. People want to be able to see if people are down along the edge of the pond as well. In terms of outer water vegetation, talked a lot about native vegetation as much as possible surrounding the pond. At the end of the day, these are stormwater ponds. They're about managing the quality of the water as well as the quantity of water. And then the native vegetation along the edge of these are some of the best ways to do that on that specific land. Also recognizing that these are publicly owned spaces. People want to have access to them for recreation. To get up close to them, whether it's for fishing or people want to walk around them with some sort of cave or mulch or stone trail. And then people want to get down to the edge of the pond as well. So. These are some things that we've learned and kind of talking to the residents at both the Shadow Creek Pond as well as Circina Pond. And I think they fit really well with. What we probably see with most of the ponds across the city. Some of the things we've learned today in talking about Shadow Creek Pond and Circina Pond, communication and partnership with the property owners is really important. We've really made a lot of progress with the, the owners that live adjacent to Shadow Creek Pond as well as the Circina Park Pond. And really have built some strong relationships from that. And we know that they want to have that vegetation almost free from the water. They don't want to see algae. They don't want to see a lot of cattails and things like that on there. The Iowa DNR has been an incredible partner for us as part of this process and learning about this. We were trying to figure out how to get rid of the algae on the Shadow Creek Pond and just really weren't having a lot of luck. And they brought in their, their fisheries experts and their. Water quality experts and gave us the right thing. And we've been getting a lot of nice praise from the residents to live around Shadow Creek Pond. They're very excited that we've got something that's under control and it's looking very nice. We bet they want.
Richard, can we replicate that effort on Circina Pond?
Yes, yep, we've been working on that. I think we've got that mostly under control as well. One of the things we're noticing on the ponds that have more vegetation issues. The depth of them is generally shallower. So both the Circina and Shadow Creek Ponds are an average about 10 feet deep at its max. The other ones up in the, the Wilds area are actually neighborhood of fifteen plus feet deep for their max depth. And we're just seeing that extra depth. Is actually creating less vegetation issues for us. So, but we have been working really closely on both those ponds. I think they're both looking pretty good. Talked about this about physical and visual access to the edge of the ponds for fishing and for safety. That was something we heard a lot. They're important assets to the community and access to recreation is important to property owners as well as residents that don't necessarily back up to the ponds. So based on that, what we'll do is based on any comments we get from you tonight, we'll revise the policy that was in the packet tonight, based on your feedback. We'll bring that policy back likely in December for your approval. Next, one of the big things that we want to do is communicate with residents about management guidelines and expectations. This is something that we've learned and will work with Pete and Molly. To really communicate out to residents that back up to these ponds, not just the Shadow Creek and Circina one, but all the ponds. So we can start to have some of that communication and dialogue. What is this there for? Expectations of you as a resident and us as a city on how we're going to manage those. And then something we'll probably repeat on a somewhat semi regular basis because. People move, new owners move in. So we want to make sure that we're communicating and keeping up with that cycle of that. And then one of the things we're going to recommend is. We'll get into more detail with each of these ponds little by little and actually set up specific management plans where we go out and work with the residents and talk through some of those things. Do they want to see fishing access lanes down there? Do they want to see a mulch trail around it? Are there areas they'd like for differ to have modes so they can get a better view out there? So. We'll recommend actually going a little bit in depth on each one of the seven ponds to get some better specific guidelines for each one of those. But as a whole, that's kind of a recommendation. Keep the waters vegetation free as much as possible while limiting the amount of chemicals we use. Have native vegetation around most of them and then provide opportunities for recreation, whether it's fishing, walking or just hanging out in nature. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Susan.
One of the greatest concerns we've heard. From non-city on ponds, it relates to sedimentation. And while there's a reference here to. Some of the newer ponds having forbays that. Help to collect some things to reduce the amount of sedimentation. That is still going to be. An issue over time. So I wonder if we shouldn't have some more specific outline here. About what the city's intent is or isn't. On that, which is likely to become the most sensitive issue, especially right now, we have some ponds that are deeper. And therefore not causing as much vegetation issue as those silt in they will.
Yeah.
So I think that's a piece that's missing. And then just for our purposes, understanding some of the costs that. Are currently being incurred or anticipated to be incurred based on what our, what plan we approve.
Yeah, absolutely. Those are easy things that we can work out and work with Ray and. And public works as well as Doug and his team. And we'll kind of get some, some thoughts together on the sedimentation issue and how to handle that. And then we have a good tracking of costs on. What does it cost us to spray up at Shadow Creek Pond and Circina Pond? So we can, we can articulate those costs in kind of a worst case spraying scenario for a pond like that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Yeah.
I know it's surprising. I have questions on this one. And this may be for, this, this first question may just be for Doug. I'm not sure, but do we have? But do we have any intent or plans for future ponds beyond the seven that we have currently?
Yes, ponds for everybody. I think it's probable that unless the city were to make some dramatic change in the requirements for stormwater management, ponds are the most economical way to achieve compliance with a lot of the requirements themselves. So I don't think you're going to see less ponds. Certainly, the question of who owns that pond is controllable. So, you know, certainly you could have that discussion. But again, as we have at least come up to this particular point, you know, the idea that these facilities will be adequately maintained by homeowners association. It's probably, again, questionable.
And we know the answer to that, yeah.
So yes, I think you're going to have more ponds. I suspect you're going to have more city-owned ponds, but that is certainly your choice.
Okay, thank you. So, Richard, with that in mind, I'm wondering, should we have within the policy a couple of different categories of one that where the ponds are not currently surrounded by or ringed by residential homes versus those like Schuler right now doesn't have any any housing around it. So in my mind, the maintenance and upkeep of a pond like that would be different than something like Shadow Creek that has a bunch of $800,000 homes ringing around it. So, you know, because if we add more on, they may not immediately be, you know, surrounded by residential homes.
I think I would probably say I think it makes sense to maybe treat them all pretty much the same. Because we're still talking about recreation and public access to them. And so I think those same principles, same principles would typically hold. And now that we have a pretty good plan, I'm working with the Iowa DNR on how to keep the, those vegetation off the water and keep them mostly algae-free. I think it's a pretty small, small cost and small time effort to get to that point. So I guess from my perspective, I don't know if I'd want to differentiate how we're managing them based on the wealth of like the value of the house behind it. I think we want to kind of keep a same approach.
Fair enough. So when I read through the policy, in my mind, it was a little bit nebulous. And I don't want to be too prescriptive, but, you know, it reads more like goals than it does. Here's our policy of what we're going to do.
Matt and I definitely talked about that and whether or not we wanted to go more specific. We certainly can before we bring it back if that's the desire of the council.
I mean, I think it should be a little bit more specific. Again, I don't want to be too prescriptive because I know each pond may be, it may be a little different. But what's our policy for how much algae coverage is there on a pond before we have to start doing A, B, or C?
Yeah, so we did jump into a little bit of that with the actual Shadow Creek specific one where we talked about percentages of shoreline vegetation as well as cover on there. So we could just pull some of those, those elements that we developed as part of that and move them into the more general policy because I think they would hold up pretty well. I think we went into saying we don't want to have 0% vegetation on the pond because then it makes it harder for the fish to survive.
For sure.
So we definitely did jump into that. So we could bring some of those more specific.
Along with the maintenance, the vegetation, the maintenance of the trails, things of that. It's just right now, it's nothing but just, at least the way I read it, was just a goal of we want to maintain the trail. Okay, well, what does that mean?
No, absolutely.
So, okay. Yeah, that's it. Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, Richard, what, along those lines, policies on, on fountains or some type of water agitation systems as well? Do we support those? Do we not support those?
So the way we kind of approached it and discussed it with the Shadow Creek residents was is that if we are able to find a chemical way to keep the ponds mostly algae-free, that a fountain did not necessarily, or an agitator did not need to be something that was incurred as part of that. As part of that, it actually, then obviously it reached up the cost, the capital cost to purchase that and then operating cost to pay for power to run a fountain or an agitator throughout there. And so that was one of the reasons we asked the Shadow Creek residents to give us a year to get the algae thing figured out before we went down that road. Because we wanted to see if that would be a more economical and viable way to do that. Because most of these ponds, except for this one out here, are pretty remote from a power source. So you'd have to be running a power source to it. Then you'd have to be paying to buy the bubblers or the fountains. And then you have to be paying a company to go out and put them out there and pull them in every year. So a lot of higher ongoing costs where the chemical stuff costs themselves are pretty small for the most part.
And totally agree. I just wonder if it shouldn't be mentioned here somehow. We've explored this and and this, you know, that's not our first option. We'd like to carefully treat it before we looked at that. Just to show that we've considered that as an option and, and we've, you know, we've ran the numbers on that.
What I would add to that is when we met and had the DNR officials with us for the Shadow Creek Pond discussion, they actually were strongly advising against it. Putting any aerators or any kind of fountains because of the maintenance. And he, I can't remember the gentleman's name from the DNR was saying you can just go a little bit further to a neighboring community. I can point out where those fountains have not solved the issue and yet are actually causing more maintenance problems just because.
Causing some erosion and things like that.
Right, well, and just the fountain itself having issues. And so he, in front of the whole neighborhood, said, I would advise against those if you can prevent it. So I think that's something we could speak to council member Klein in there is that, you know, based on some DNR recommendations, that that is going to be kind of a last resort in an extreme situation. Maybe that's what you would put in a policy guideline versus.
Yeah, I just think we need to include that and totally understand the reasoning right there. I just think if we're looking at forming a policy, you need to throw the options in. And that, that might be a good one just to show that we've considered that.
Perfect.
Weaver, are you slipping? Nebulous is your best.
That's the best I got tonight. It's a long night.
I got that one like that. One quick Google and I had it.
Other comments or anything else for Richard? And I wonder if some of these things could go in an appendix if they don't need to be in the policy itself. So it's all together in one document.
Yeah, we can get it all edited and we'll get it back on your future council agenda for your consideration and approval.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to regional entities and we need to provide some direction for those who will be voting on that. So, Matt.
All right, Your Honor, we got one last item, discussion item for you tonight. I know it's a relatively big one. Pete, if you want, you switch over to the, my side here. So I'm not going to repeat what's in the memo. Lot of material in there, kind of what the big policy questions are for the council to provide direction to your Clive representatives on, Councilmember McCoy on DART and WRA over the next two months. And then also Mayor Edwards for a vote next week on Polk County Emergency Management. So with DART, what's on the screen is the Reimagine DART proposal in terms of the route changes for Clive. This is adding regular seven-day service for Clive from two different routes. So definitely an upgrade in service and as was requested by the council, wanting to see more coverage in the community and implementation of a microtransit zone shared with Urbandale. So as we've shared this in the past, that in terms of what City of Clive asked for and this DART reimagined experience was delivered in terms of what you see on the screen here. So Route Three, Route Four, those blue lines are the regular seven-day service. Every 30-minute routes, I believe. And then the colored area would be the microtransit zone. So what do we get for that? So one of the big questions that we had, we talked about as strategic planning, was what does it cost Clive? So knowing that we, under the current system, sit in a lower tier, Tier Four, which had primarily just express service. So one thing to note in Reimagine DART is express service goes away. And as was shared in the packet, there was definitely some feedback from some of our Clive writers who use the express routes of not liking the changes with Reimagine DART is express routes are going away across the entire system in the metro area. So right now we're sitting at Tier Four. What tier we sit at is kind of where we, what we pay in terms of overall property taxes in the DART system. We're going from Tier Four and then under this proposal to Tier Three because we're now getting regular seven-day service in addition to the microtransit. So they're changing up how they calculate the tiers. They're no more doing it on percentage of service and of service hours in your community versus these broader categories that they had in the current system that we sit in today. So one of the questions we had is, is that going to change our levy? So because under the existing system, and I will pop back to that, there's a, there's been a phase in of the formula where Des Moines is taken off the top and then you have those tiers of all the other cities. And that phase in was going to result in our, our DART levy. It's levied in Clive on Clive taxpayers just kind of slowly go down over time. So one of the questions we had is with Reimagine DART, is that going to change? And this is probably the best graphic to show is what we're, what dollar amount we would be paying under the current formula contribution versus this updated under Reimagine DART. What you can see is it's pretty marginal. We are within about, you know, less than $100,000 more under the formula. Now, what this would result in is as a percentage, this is going up hardly at all, basically staying flat. Well, of course, our tax of evaluation goes up every year. So there is the potential, of course, we haven't seen the levy rates yet from DART that's coming up here for this next meeting. But I would anticipate our levy not going, not going up for Clive. If anything, it would stay the same or drop slower than it would have under the existing system. So the question before the council is, for direction in this Reimagine DART vote and funding formula for the next meeting is we're getting a substantial upgrade in service under Reimagine DART when they're doing a 10% cut of the system across the board. You know, that's part of the benefit of our location in the region, particularly on the west side, sitting in the middle of the western suburbs. We're benefiting from that under this Reimagine DART proposal for negative additional cost. If anything, it basically could result in our levy rate not dropping as quickly under the current system. So that is really what's before the council in terms of this kind of Reimagine DART vote for the December vote. Of course, this gets us through the next couple of years. We know that there's been some chatter, particularly from the city of Des Moines on their funding contributions to the DART system. Also hearing that some of those conversations may be shifting now with, now that we're past the election. So we'll see what that looks like in the next calendar year with the change in the council there. That is not a decision that's right in front, immediately in front of the DART commission, but will be a discussion point in 2026. But, so this is ultimately the decision before you get more. One thing that I did want to mention that I included in the memo is what was key is the percentages of what's this mean for Clive? 28% more Clive residents would have access to public transit under this Reimagine DART scenario and 71% more jobs that our residents could get to within 45 minutes. That was a big objective behind the Reimagine DART proposal. And then you can see from the, my memo, the, some of the tax implications in terms of the cost differences. So I know Councilmember McCoy is your commissioner. I don't know, Michael, you have anything you would like to add that I didn't cover?
Good job.
I, quick question, Mike, what's the downside? I mean, you know, based upon Matt's analysis, it's pretty clear that it's a good deal for Clive for both coverage and cost-wise. Is there a downside to Clive to this?
I think the, I'm not so sure it's going to go down. Your levy is going to go down on it, right? It's still a big number. I mean, you're talking over a million dollars. For what?
Right.
And so perhaps you don't know unless you run it a year and see if your ridership goes up on the on-demand, right? If it doesn't, I would suggest that you don't continue at this rate at a million dollars for no increase in ridership, right? But they're also going to ask for, perhaps, at least that's what they're hinting, is for a three-year agreement. The city of Des Moines is going to be asking for a three-year agreement on this process. And I, again, I would not be personally in favor of signing a three-year agreement with something you have no clue on what's going to happen in the next year or two. One, with their funding, two, with your own funding and the legislators. But why would you get wrapped up into a multi-year agreement to basically financially save them? Right?
And is that something we can negotiate individually as a city? Or how will that work?
Yes, you can, because that's going to come in the light of a, there's so many more pieces to this that are going to unfold here soon. But you're going to have a 20AD change perhaps, or opening up to 20AD. And that's where they're going to ask for their three-year commitment on that. I'd say don't open it. Why would you open the 20AD, right?
And there's not much commission support for that either, right?
Yeah, so you're going to have to, the way you can say no is every city is going to have to agree to the 20AD. So if you fold on that, then you're locked into a three-year. And I think that's absurd of why you'd ever get into a multi-year contract with something you have in front of you for the last couple of decades, right? But I think that's your biggest risk is what is, whether the devil's going to be in the detail of what Des Moines tries to pull here. They're also asking for another commissioner. And again, I would be opposed to that personally. There doesn't need to be another commissioner by Des Moines.
How many do they have now?
They have one. And they want a second one. They're also asking the same type of thing at WRA is to put multiple. Now they have, I think they have a football team on WRA at this point.
They have a number of them.
Right, like nine or short of a football team?
We've got about four on MPO, so.
Yeah, so they're going to go.
Amen football.
Yeah, yeah. So they're going to go down to, I think, three or four. And again, I think that's absurd. I don't understand why when the numbers are switching. You put Urbandale, Ankeny, and West Des Moines together. And if you're basing it off flow, you have more flow or as much flow with the suburbs, more flow with the suburbs in general than you do Des Moines. They're asking for more, one of their arguments is because it's located inside the city of Des Moines. Well, hell, that means Reynolds should have nine votes at Metro Waste Authority or Mitchellville, actually, right? Should have nine votes, more than their populated, or more than their elected officials. But, so again, those are coming in the next few months, those votes as well. So I think they're all tied together. Some have voiced their opinion of they're not open to that. But I think you're looking today at a questionable vote of whether it goes through or not. So you got to stop it at your, you know, this level. You got Pleasant Hill that's leaving. You got Bondurant that's leaving, right? So I don't know why Bondurant's still, I believe they're leaving.
Well, and then there's the paratransit only option that the commission is considering as well.
Which is absurd. I mean, I agree with it, but it's absurd they didn't offer it to Grimes. And now they're going to offer it to Pleasant Hill and Bondurant. And so you just let Grimes walk. And that's all they wanted. And so they went and hired their own. So a question, why doesn't Pleasant Hill and Bondurant hire their own? Lots of pieces there.
So Michael needs some guidance.
I mean, I think we, we are getting more of what we requested. Better coverage in the microtransit, which was something that I know I specifically asked for from Amanda. And so I think, you know, we need to move forward with this. I agree with Mike that the three-year term is too long. We shouldn't do that. We need to reevaluate it after, after one or two years. But otherwise, the change in finances is negligible. So I think it makes sense to give them an opportunity to, to provide better service to our residents.
I'd echo that with the same thoughts that it makes sense for us for both coverage and financially. But I'm hesitant on the three-year agreement. I think we reevaluate after, after a year and tweak that.
And I'll be interested to see if those, any of those terms change after January 1 from Des Moines. They could go the other direction, but this is because the council has changed.
Yeah, sure.
The council majority on the DART issue has changed. So that, all those terms could change after January 1. So that's another reason to wait that out a little bit. So that's another reason to wait that out a little bit, my perspective, right?
Do you know where the three-year timeframe came from?
So Mayor Bozen um, had sent an email to the DART commission. This is probably two months ago.
It was.
Had a, had a variety of terms in it. Um, one of them was a three-year agreement, the, the Des Moines having the flexibility to not use all of their franchise fee um, or use all of their franchise fee, but then reduce their property tax asking in terms of support, basically cutting some funding from DART. And then this uh, uh, consideration of the, by the commission of an additional board seat. Um, that was shared with the commission. And then as, as Michael alluded to, there was some discussion of the commission that was a non-starter for a number of them. Um, and that uh, hasn't been fully resolved. And again, our, uh, I think one of the questions outstanding is, is that still a request in 2026? I think that's yet to be seen. So um, I think that'll be a discussion item that'll go, it's not an immediate impact uh, on the funding. Des Moines has committed to 26 and 27 funding. Um, this is more of an impact in 28.
Why would we commit to three years in 28? That, that makes no sense.
Right, so yeah, there's some questions on certain things making sense a lot in that particular proposal. And um, and so I, I think there's going to be more, uh, just my personal opinion. I think there's going to be a lot more dialogue of that in 26 and these terms may change.
It looks fishy, it's fishy.
Right.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I will be curious to see, yes, we have gotten significantly better coverage and access in Clive. Does ridership actually go up?
Right.
Because on paper, this seems like a really good deal for Clive. And we don't have great ridership right now. I think as the candidate for him, Mike joked, we could just buy each of them a car for as many riders as we have.
It's not a joke, it's true.
Right, that's a million dollars.
It's like 20 people a day, right?
So we had great survey participation as well. You can look at there. So long-term doesn't seem like a great solution to go three years. The one year does seem better, two-year maybe, people know about it, they can see it. They were displeased about the express routes, they might feel differently once they see it in action. I don't, I don't know.
Right.
That's an unknown.
What's different about this on-demand though is it's not what was rolled out in Ankeny, right? So it's a little bit of a bait and switch here. So Ankeny loves it and the ridership is up huge. But it's not anything like Ankeny has. And Ankeny is no longer going to get what they have, which is going to be interesting to see what happens. The current model is that the car meets you at your door and it will take me to Ted's house.
Right, it's like a Uber.
Yeah, yeah. This model is nowhere near that.
You might have to go to the corner.
Yeah, I gotta go to 86th Street maybe to get the on-demand. And then it will take me to Red Brown or whatever that, you know, the corner up by University and Year Street, 123rd and drop me off, right? And then I walk.
Right.
That's the new model.
Right.
Right.
Which is still better than the old.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
And when uh, when Michael and I met with Amanda and we were, we were talking about this, you know, she mentioned too, that it's 12 to 18 months for you to really see whether ridership behavior changes in terms of this new route availability. So this is implemented roughly next summer. By the end of 20, uh, calendar year 2027. Um, I think it's going to be an expectation of the commission. I think I'm fair to say that there is going to need to be appropriate data brought. Um, and they will be, and DART staff knows this, and they will be tracking that as best as they can to show those results. Because I think that will be, um, so that roughly 18-month, 12 to 18-month timeframe, once it's implemented, will start showing you a lot.
That's the positive of this new route though, you know? You've, you've had DART in front of you before and they say, well, we can't tell you who rides it or who doesn't, right? We don't know unique riders. We don't know what, who are Clive resident. In this new model, they'll know
They should know.
Exactly who they are, right? Because they're picking them up at their house, so.
So it sounds like a, a yes, but not a long-term commitment. Is that where we are? Did I give you enough, Mike?
Uh, yes, yes on this, no on changing the 2080.
Yep, yep. All right, very good.
All right, uh, the uh, WRA, um, again, council member McCoy's been working on this uh, very hard over the last two years, serving on the organizational assessment committee, which was a big part of this 2080 update uh, in terms of changing the relationship uh, between the city of Des Moines and WRA as a whole. Um, which I think Des Moines was also welcoming a discussion on in terms of knowing that the operator contract agreement. Um, maybe I'm, maybe I'm going a little far with that. But um, uh, update to the operator contract uh, agreement, which was also coming to you at the same time. Um, a lot of work has been done here in terms of having a stronger, for the WRA board, having a stronger relationship and oversight of the WRA director. Some things have already been implemented, like the WRA having its own legal counsel now, which was something that was very much needed. Um, it was uh, from the city of Des Moines before that. And so I think that has been a nice transition. Um, so there's other organizational aspects, clarifications on certain aspects of how budgeting is done. Um, but I think the biggest thing too is just to keep in mind with all of this, although there's some organizational improvements um, that have incorporated in the 2080, it's just important to note that this also updates the maximum capital spending number for the WRA from 675 million to 975 million. Now, there's been an extensive uh, facilities plan, strategic plan put together by the WRA. The overall CIP, I think, is over a billion uh, dollars. So you put these two numbers together, you're getting pretty close to where that number is at. Um, extensive enhancements needed at the WRF or the wastewater reclamation facility on the southeast side of Des Moines, as well as a number of sewers, one that'll, you know, as the, uh, this council is aware, that'll be coming through Clive here over the next three to four years. Uh, with the, the parallel trunk sewer through our community. So again, I think there is a, I've just kind of put on the slide here and you can click it over. Uh, Pete, just one, one slide from the, uh, bond council's presentation that was included in the last WRA packet. Uh, just some key points, again, this was in your packet um, that were added to this particular uh, 2080 amendment. Um, or 20, uh, restated 20, this will be a full restatement of the 2080 and some other uh, items in coordination with the operator contract. So you have a 2080 agreement update that all the communities will have, will be asked to consider that are part of the WRA. And then the WRA board has the operator contract agreement to consider with the city of Des Moines. These are all happening at the same time. And if I, I don't want to put words in council member McCoy's mouth, but this, if I remember correctly, I'm saying that they needed to go together. That was part of the organizational assessment committee's goal. Think that's being achieved with at least the way the current process is laid out. In terms of schedule at this point, I think the WRA has a board meeting this month to finalize the form uh, of the 2080. And then in uh, December, um, we would, all the communities would be asked to bring these forward uh, to their city councils for vote. And then uh, that would be shared with the WRA and they would uh, have a special meeting, I believe, at either late December or early January to kind of recommission the new 2080. So, and a lot more details are included in the packet and some snapshots from some of the staff and bond council information from the last WRA packet. But that's all included in there. And um, I, uh, I don't know, Chair, uh, WRA Chair McCoy has any additional comments to make? Uh, this one is a big one you've been working on for the last couple of years.
I don't, I think this is the best we're going to get. Is it great? Is it perfect? No, um, it still has Des Moines with their hands pretty deep into the pocket of the WRA. But short of breaking up that entire relationship between, all of them are employees of Des Moines. And uh, it, the new policy does, or the new uh, 2080 does spell out some of that uh, separation and how it should be. And also then what they pay if they're u- utilizing WRA employees for snow plowing or parks, which is routine uh, that they do. Uh, how they should be paying the WRA back for that. Um, instead of just using their employees for, as I stated in a meeting when I think it was Bozen said that that was non-negotiable. I said, well, as Cl- Clive's Public Works Director would probably love to be able to call on half of your staff to come plow snow too. But we can't just all have free will and go willingly on staff members to, to be able to do our work.
Free labor for Des Moines.
So that's changed a bit. And yes, that was a stipulation I put in at, at the uh, assessment. There's three people on the assessment committee uh, that these two go hand in hand at the same time. Because Des Moines wanted the uh, operating agreement first. Uh, and then they would talk about the 2080. And I said, that's not how it's going to work. You want the operating agreement, so you will operate on the 2080 first. And then you could have the operating agreement. And so a little pushing and shoving on that one. And we landed with, they will get both at the same time. If one fails, they both fail.
What do you think the prospects are?
It'll.
Do you think it'll pass? Yep.
Uh, did we get everything we wanted? No. But it moved the needle quite a bit.
Everybody supported?
I supported. I mean, I always joke a little bit at almost a billion dollars for the debt limit. You know, that's been going up ever since I was on WRA, whatever it was, 10 years ago, whatever it was. And it's going to continue to go up. I mean, you know, it is what it is, but it's a big jump right there. I support it, but you know, Mike, like you said, it's probably as good as we're going to get. But you know, it's this type of long-term spending that just never seems to decrease.
All right, I think we got that one wrapped up.
Now, all right, the last one. Uh, Polk County Emergency Management. So this one, uh, whereas the other two have been kind of in process for a couple of years, this one kind of came up a little bit more of a sudden in the last three to four months. Um, so Polk County Emergency Management, um, it is, uh, as I laid out in the memo, how it's currently funded. Uh, Polk County's uh, supports a, uh, from directly from their budget, pretty substantial amount um, for Polk County EMA. And then the cities in Polk County contribute based on a 2080 agreement, 50 cents per capita of our Polk County population to be roughly a quarter, um, 25 to 30% of the Polk County EMA's uh, budget. And that's how it's been functioning for a number of years under an existing 2080 agreement. Um, some of you may remember in the news, uh, earlier this year, uh, Polk County during their budget process um, had quite a few questions about their funding amounts of Polk County Emergency Management. With the potential of cutting their number in half and saying that the suburban communities or the other cities, not just suburban communities, Des Moines included, should make up the difference. Uh, that kind of got sprung on uh, everybody in that budget process. That got walked back uh, by Polk County after about a, a few weeks. Um, but it definitely, the uh, Polk County Emergency Management was definitely put on notice by the county at that time is that we need to find other funding solutions for Polk County Emergency Management going forward. So basically the commission, Polk County Emergency Management Commission and uh, and staff went about doing that and coming back with options. Um, as was included in the link to the, the presentation, they had about five different options that they were looking at. Um, they've come back to uh, under Iowa code, there is a authority to have their own property tax levy. And that is what the commission, the executive committee of the commission is proposing to the full commission for consideration and vote next week. Uh, what that means, as I laid out in the memo, is it's, the county is roughly funding um, the equivalent of about 2.7 cents on the countywide levy uh, for their funding support. To make up the other difference in terms of what the cities are providing, you need to add a penny essentially to that number. So in uh, my memo, I laid out some kind of positives and negatives of implementation of a levy. So of course positives, it um, would eliminate the need for Clive to have anything in our general operating budget. We currently contribute about $5,500 to Polk County Emergency Management um, as a part of the 2080 agreement. Uh, if this countywide levy was implemented, that would go away. Um, now, but on the other hand, one of the drawbacks is, is if a penny increase is implemented, Clive is a high taxable valuation community, lower populated, you know? Our property valuation per capita is pretty high. So just that penny actually generates $13,000 um, for Polk County Emergency Management versus the 5,500 we pay out of our budget today. Now, our budget, our general fund in particular is capped, right? Under, as we talked about earlier, under the legislative priorities, under the current legislative framework. Um, this levy is not capped. Of course, I get, always get a little nervous when you're adding another levy to the property tax bill. That's a negative on my mind, but at the, on the positive side, it's also transparent and showing just like the assessor's office has a direct line, you'd see it for Polk County Emergency Management. The commission is made up of the mayors uh, or another appointed elected official from each of the cities in the county. The county sheriff and a county board supervisor member uh, who would vote on this levy and this budget. They vote on the budget now, but now they would be setting this levy every year uh, going forward if it's implemented. Uh, based on my conversations with uh, some colleagues is there is, there has not been any strong opposition uh, from any city at this point. And even the county who had um, some initial concerns, um, sounds like that there may be some movement there as well, although I want to confirm that. Um, but there hasn't been a city that has come out against this at this point. At least I'm not aware of one of the ones that I've pulled so far. Uh, but again, there were still a couple that were still evaluating uh, this proposal. So there's a kind of fast-moving dynamics on this one. Again, on the screen there, you see the positives and, and negatives as uh, we were discussing earlier. Uh, but this will be uh, in front of Mayor Edwards on Wednesday afternoon of next week. As the vote is, uh, there is, it is an action item. We have seen the agenda. Um, they need to make the decision actually in November, um, if they were to implement this. So that is what is before you uh, in terms of direction. I know Mayor Edwards, if there's anything you would like to add based on, I know you attended that August meeting where this was presented. There was discussion um, amongst a number of elected officials during that meeting.
Well-presented. They do important work and I think they need to be supported.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of of two minds on this one, right? I mean, I like the fact that it's being pulled out of the general fund. That's, I think that's good and that makes a good point about it being transparent. Um, you know, it starts at one number, but we know that that will go up because it always does, right? So um, I, I don't love that. But what I would say is this type of function is what residents expect from their government. Is this type of emergency management? They expect us to be able to do this at a very basic level. And so I think most, I think most of our residents would support it um, because of that. Because when, when an emergency happens, they expect their government to be prepared to deal with it. So, so I would support it.
Two additional items that I would add to that too, Councilmember Weaver is, that I think is if there is support for this and it moves forward. One community commented, um, when I reached out, that is going to be very important for the commission um, to really set the expectation with the Polk County EMA staff on budget review. And also um, this particular community recommended, similar to what DART does of having the, the city manager group have a, a chance to review that budget before it's proposed um, to the commission. We do this also with DART, usually in January. It's usually late January, early February. Um, and that's another tax levy, you know, organization, as we just talked about, is to put some additional protections, this isn't probably the right word, but if you know, you know, maybe further
Checkpoints.
scrutiny.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe checkpoints in the process. Uh, the other thing I would share uh, with your concern is one concern that I have is that I worry, um, because this has been talked about in the presentation as a way for the nine, the uh, 911 service board that supports all the public safety dispatch centers in the county. Um, where the, the money from the, our cell phone surcharge or the, our landline surcharge comes through from the state and is distributed to the three-piece apps in the county, Des Moines, Polk County and West Com. Uh, that there, there has been some discussion about that merging with the Emergency Management Commission and then the 911 board having access to this tax levy. I get concerned with that and I think that if this does move forward, we have to be very I get concerned with that and I think that if this does move forward, we have to be very watchful of that. Because um, for example, my biggest concern is, is Westcom a number of years ago invested in our computer-aided dispatch um, system. It's the most advanced system in the county, one of the more advanced ones in the state. All of our taxpayers of the Westcom communities invested in that out of our own general fund budget. Um, Des Moines and Polk County do not have, they have systems that are past their useful life. So I just wanna make sure that at that, that piece comes into the conversation, the commission is very well aware of that and, and um, it is not a, a backdoor to funding something that our taxpayers have already paid for.
We're subsidizing Des Moines and Polk County.
Yes, potentially, potentially. And so I think, and I shared that with the, the director um, at the time when this was presented, as I think I'm very nervous about that. And so I think that it's behooves the commission to also be very concerned about that. This is step one. What's step two and three? And we have to be very cognizant of what those steps may mean before anything goes further.
I have one thing to add.
Yeah, go ahead.
And that is, I like your reference to the commission overseeing the budget. We like to say that we want the state to trust us as a city to make choices that are relevant for those we serve. And I think it's worth our saying, we want to trust that commission and um, staff to handle those decisions appropriately in a similar way. So I'm supportive.
Yeah, I would just say that coming from the Dallas County portion that we're uh, probably it's a pretty good deal for the Dallas County Clive residents to, to uh, to, to generate this particular agreement as opposed to come to the general fund. So I'm supportive of.
Do you, you just, you don't like that Polk County folks?
I love Polk County folks. I grew up in Polk County.
Just checking.
So ahead, I think everyone's agreement, so I'll vote yes on that then next week. All right, uh, anything further from you, Matt?
That is plenty, Your Honor.
Don't ignore that last paragraph though, where it talks about the Housing Solutions Alliance.
Oh, thank you. Uh, I do wanna mention that, that, and that's something um, uh, I kinda see as the next item uh, to come before you. Uh, both Central Iowa Water Works, uh, with some work that's happening there as a follow-up from the irrigation ban. And then um, the Housing Solutions Alliance, that's, those are ones that will be coming back after we've got some more information. I know some of those, there's still work being done on both of those right now. And so hopefully after the first of the year, we'll have some more information on those. So more to come. Thank you for that.
Thanks. All right, uh, correspondent Matthew. Pete, what have you got?
Thank you, Your Honor. So this week I finished up a very, very good uh, course, classroom work that I was doing online for AI implementation in government in the public sector. Wonderful framing for thinking about how you evaluate the appropriateness of some solutions, how you prioritize, what you tackle first and why. How you help take your organization through that type of change while respecting people's concerns about the technology. So the way the action planned, this is laid out uh, from strategic planning in January, I'll be here to start talking with all of you. Uh, had a, a really good discussion with the executive team today about some of these early strategy ideas about how we'll approach the technology. Um, but not surprisingly, given the pace, it's already here among us, right? And it's wonderful every day to hear about how colleagues, especially this one to my right, is using solutions, I thought that are off the shelf every day to become even more efficient than he previously was. But we could talk about that at every single department in Clive right now. We've got a lot of curious um, and thoughtful folks who are thinking about how these tools are gonna help us deliver great value for taxes paid. So excited to see where that leads in the next few months. Um, finally, and, and we, we talked about this in a little bit in October, but the big announcement has come out and I actually just heard from our friends at Polco again this week. They wanna do some more storytelling with us about being the national champs in trust in government. So we will look for, uh, we'll be working with them to generate some additional storytelling, uh, both locally and nationally. More to come on that front.
That's it, Pete?
Yes, Your Honor.
If there aren't any questions, Bree?
I have nothing to report.
Ted?
Okay, so I'll pass out some, Mr. Ian Pete, um, the annual report from Icon, you can look at that at your leisure. Um, Icon financially is doing very well. Um, a, a number of the projects did get delayed, as we talked about, um, previously due to all the rain that we had during the summertime, but um, expect twenty twenty-six, we will be having uh, a number of ribbon cuttings, um, both regionally, for example, Greenbelt Landing will be one, that, that will be a, a ribbon cutting um, that Icon will be involved with. Um, Johnston will have, Urbendales having one. Um, and then there'll also be some of the, the bigger ones that are downtown. That uh, so we'll, we'll start seeing some of those. So the point is that it's starting to come to fruition and we're, we're starting to see some, some real activation with Icon. So that's um, it's, it's a really exciting time there. Um, uh, Metro Waste, I did a, a very interesting landfill tour a couple of weeks ago with a number of legislators. Um, had this kinda inarticulate tour guide that really didn't know what he was talking about half the time, but, but um, but luckily he had Leslie there with him to help. So that, it still worked out great. Um, but there, they do have a lot of amazing stuff going on there and it's, it's, it's a, it's pretty interesting. If you ever have a chance to do a, a tour of the landfill, definitely recommend it. It is very fascinating. Um, and then lastly, I think many of us up here went to the uh, chamber luncheon last week that honored our former mayor Scott Sircene, and that was a, a really great uh, ceremony as well. That's it.
Thanks Ted.
Eric.
No report, Your Honor.
Very good. Susan?
Well, there've been a couple of watershed-related meetings, a statewide meeting happened yesterday in Cedar Rapids. And one of the interesting topics of conversation was how do you deal with disinformation that's out there related to water? Today, we had a specific update from those who did the Cisra report. Claire Ruby from Drake was here to talk about data that was collected related to Walnut Creek specifically. And you can be prepared to hear more about some relatively high levels of human E. coli that were discovered, which was surprising to me. And um, it's worse in Beaver Creek. But we had conversations about ways we might look to address that um, with our communities. And then um, the Housing Solutions Alliance met yesterday. Matt's right, that continues to evolve and right now, finalizing basically bylaws for this entity on how it will operate with various committees and um, that kind of thing. They're really trying to balance between the public and private sectors um, and serving. And I remain in a leadership role on the governance part of that. So we are represented with that. Um, and then lastly, I wanted to pass on a very interesting comment that I heard yesterday in attending a meeting in Ames for a project that is um, being promoted up there. And Dan O, who used to be the CEO of R E G and is now with the um, Ames Chamber and Economic Development Group, was making a comment related to cities. And he said that the state is going to be in a downward economic impact for the next two years. Um, including some in- increasing unemployment and some other things. And the way he framed it um, was that the state sees their way out of that as trying to reduce the ability of cities to tax. But it's kind of all connected. Anyway, that came up because of conversation over whether the city of Ames would be supportive of this project or not. But I thought it was really interesting coming from someone who had been in such a strong management role with a good economics background to frame it so starfully in terms of where the state is. And we know it. I mean, you can watch the economic indicators and what happens with each meeting of the um, council that looks at what the projected revenues are for the state. But it is very likely to continue to have impacts on us as a city. That's it.
Michael?
I do not have any.
Anything legal?
Nope, I don't have anything legal either.
No, Your Honor.
Thank you, Lisa.
Just a couple of final items. Uh, I know it was a lengthy meeting tonight. Uh, we'll unfortunately have a lengthy one a week from tonight, but that is your normal C I P workshop. That is what we do in November. Uh, we will have it in here in the room, but it will be more of a workshop style of dinner and everything and, and uh, um, but I look forward to sharing with you the five-year C I P that staff is just buttoning up here, uh, hopefully. Potentially maybe, might be able to get it out to you tomorrow, um, the packet, um, so you have a little extra time over the weekend, cause we know it's a lot of material um, to digest in terms of that C I P. So maybe tomorrow, but obviously for sure Monday, we will get that out to you. Uh, also wanted to mention, I know uh, some council members have been having some conversation with Horizon Center about a project that they're looking at. Uh, the mayor, Doug and I will be meeting with them here in a couple of weeks to uh, circle back on that conversation uh, with, with Gary and the team there and what they're looking at. And then lastly, wanna mention that next week we'll uh, be gearing up, starting the orientation for Sadie, who gutted it out for three hours, three and a half hours here tonight, uh, on her orientation, um, as a newly incoming elected official. So we'll get that going over the next month and a half here. That's all I have, Your Honor, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Matt? Well, speaking of elections, I think uh, the uh, candidates have all done a pretty good job of getting their signs pulled. But I will say, if you run across a candidate's sign, uh, I'm sure each of us would appreciate you just pulling it and throw it in your trunk and we'll retrieve it. Again, I think most of them are, are gone, but just in case there are any stragglers. Anything else for the good of the order this evening? So we'll adjourn at nine twenty-nine.